Good evening and welcome to the August 14, 2017, meeting of the Merrimack School Board. If you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two on the agenda is public participation. If anyone would like to speak to an item on tonight's agenda, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'm closing public participation. Onto item number three, which is the request for the school district to participate in a University of New Hampshire Carce School of Public Policy Research Study regarding children's behavioral health expenditures in schools. And so I welcome to the table Dr. Douglas Gagnon, Julie Deluga, Assistant Principal of Thorntons Ferry, and John Fabrizio, Director of Special Services. Welcome.
Okay. Thanks for putting us on the agenda. Appreciate it. So, quick rundown of what we're looking to do and why my work brings me here. So as a researcher at the Carce School, we work closely with the Department of Ed and Department of Health and Human Services as they work to implement a system of care in New Hampshire for children's behavioral health services. And this is work that statutory required under RSA 135-F, and it was a bill that passed in June of 2016. And there are a number of different things that each department needs to do to comply with the statute. And one of those things is to report on the cost of children's behavioral health expenditures in the state. And this is the second year that we're trying to submit this. And the first year, it was rather rushed. We didn't, we only had a couple of months to get it together, and basically, folks at the state just pulled together all the data they had at the state. With the recognition that, given more time, we would look a bit harder because a lot of these expenditures are more at the local level, and especially with schools. And this isn't data that the state is very, is systematically collecting and categorizing. So, the steering committee that I helped facilitate thought that it would be a good idea to go out to schools and kind of dive in with a few districts. So, this study is kind of a first step to get a better sense of what's going on in the state with expenditures. And so there's two parts to the study. One is districts are sent, and this is just a handful, half a dozen or so districts in the state, they're sent, kind of a data collection tool where it asks them to go in and look at where they're spending money, along certain domains, personnel, or professional development, et cetera. And so that's the first part, and then the second part is myself and maybe a colleague go in and speak to whoever was involved and necessary to kind of complete the data collection, and get a sense of kind of what schools are considering behavioral health expenditures, and, you know, where that lies within the district, where it's collected, is it at the district or the school level, et cetera, all that type of stuff. And I think that's about it, in terms of what we're going for. I guess the second, sorry, the second part is that we're really trying to understand what districts are doing, what they categorize things, so that perhaps in future years, there could be more systematic data collection via, kind of like a stratified survey that could get a better handle on what's going on in the state. So that's kind of the quick and dirty recap of what we're looking to do.
Other questions? Michael.
Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it. My question would be, is the information that you're collecting, will that be given back to each school district to be able to compare themselves against other school districts?
So, the goal isn't necessarily to compare districts. I think that if District A and District B are willing to share stuff with each other, then that can happen, you know, outside of this study. So it could be the case that I could ask each district to, if they'd be willing to both submit their data and look at the other data, if that would be useful to them, and if they say yes, then, you know, whatever districts say yes to that, then I'll happily be the one that facilitates that.
So, just to kind of maybe reword this, I'm not necessarily, you need to understand exactly what the district, like, you don't have to give me, oh, this was Amherst's number, but be able to provide information that says, here's the high, here's the low, here's the medium, because, I'll be honest with you, we get asked for a lot of these things, but we don't get the information back sometimes that might be helpful, and I'm actually looking for a little, if we give you something, I would like something back.
So first, there is a work product from this, and it's informing the committee's work, but it's also going to be a Carce brief, so the Carce School puts out issue briefs almost on a weekly basis. So, there are on all sorts of topics, so the Carce School has a pretty broad perch in terms of what they study, but, so one thing that's going to come out of this is about a four-page issue brief that states our findings, and that will be in the public domain. So, I think that that brief in and of itself would be perhaps useful to people, because they'll be kind of looking at big trends and, you know, the findings, which you don't have the findings yet, so I don't know what it's going to look like. So there's that, and then, like I said, I'm happy to connect districts with each other that, if they're willing to share more of the fine-grained data with each other, that would show exactly what you're saying, kind of how the spending is categorized.
I guess, can I just redirect? Would one of those findings be helpful for the school district, and that information be valuable to the district?
I think it would, Mike, because we're obviously into the depths of behavioral health, and we've got the co-chairs of our committee here. We're really looking at mental health, and I think by Doug coming forward and bringing this study to us, it really is opening our eyes, because we really don't have that one category. We have the funds in different places, in other words, personnel, professional development, so it would be interesting to see what we ourselves are spinning toward that effort, and then how it would compare to our sister schools, and the schools that are being tapped are all over the state. So the beauty of our state, because it's small, and because many of us know each other, is the fact that I think that we could be connected, and I do think that people would be interested in being connected. As you know, Julie and John have told you that, we're going beyond our own district, and we're doing some work regionally, because this is a topic that's so important to all of us. And eventually, our region, which is one of five, are going to try and go forward and incorporate districts throughout the state. So I think that this is just the beginning of something. I think as a researcher, Doug can only say that he will tap into the other districts and ask them if they're willing to have their information shared. What I'm saying is, I think because of our relationship and what we're doing, I think they'll want to do that. So it's probably not 100% guaranteed, but it's like 97%, maybe, would you say? Just based on, we've never met together, I mean, we're all being looked at separately, so Doug is making, he's working with each entity to find out if they'll participate. So we've never been brought together as a collective, nor will we be, because I think it's for each district to try and interpret from its vantage point, what does it see that it's spending? Once that's known, then I think there would be, it would be very interesting to bring all of us together, or as many as want to, I would say. So, that was a long answer to you, which is, yes, I would like us to come together.
Yeah, I can't foresee a reason why you wouldn't want to do that as a participant in it, only I can't promise that people will want to do that, right?
I think I'm okay with the, I just, in general, I just want to make sure that we are getting value out of it, and not, for better sake to say, just you, so, but thank you.
Andy, did you have a question? Oh, John, I'm sorry.
I just didn't want to jump in, but thank you. I just wanted, I just wanted to note that Marge did mention our joint district meetings, and I think what's interesting about Doug's work right here is the fact is, we had difficulty in those first few meetings even identifying what we called things, what we have for different positions, who was what in the building, who did what with children in an elementary to a middle to a high. We had, we had so much variance that Julie will recall too, in those first few meetings we've had as a group collective, we were not even there yet to start naming, we're collecting data on this yet, because we may call this five different things in five different districts. And we're just starting to get to that point of having commonalities and common collection tools to even look at our internal data. So it's an important point that I think that, why I support the study, that may give us a light into some of commonalities we do have, and some things that are similar and different amongst districts that we don't have right now.
Okay. Andy, and then Naomi.
So, when you first started to explain what your, you know, what the Carce School was doing, you talked about a state RSA. Can you explain the connection between what you're doing and what the RSA is, what the requirement is, and what sort, because what I'm, my second question's going to be, you're gathering data, what is the state looking for for the data that you're gathering, and what's the intent behind it?
So, the statute requires that we report on the costs of children's behavioral health expenditures in the state. So, that's all the guidance that the statute has, so then the committee tries to say, well, what's a cost? So we're kind of operationalizing it more like an expenditure, and then we say, what's a children's behavioral health service? And people have different conceptions for that. So, it's not a really straightforward thing to answer that's going to have a dollar value that people all agree on.
So the concern I have is, we've discussed about the special ed programs we do in Merrimack, why are there two microphones here? I don't know. One, there. Is because every district is different, in terms of size, in terms of number of students that have special ed, in terms of what sort of needs are required within Merrimack versus Milford versus whatever. So, the concern I have in terms of what the, us participating to provide this, and then what the data is doing is, how is the comparison going to be done between districts or reported back up? And do you believe, based on what you know, that some learning, I'm struggling with the word, there's going to be decisions that are made, or pressures put on the way that funding is done within districts for special ed, in terms of, one district is doing it more than another, or anything like that? Because we're, Merrimack gets hit a lot of times that we're spending more on special ed than any other district, we don't have to do it. But we all know, based on what John has reported, that whoever's in our district that particular year may have a need well beyond what Amherst needs or Bedford needs. So, given the way you're gathering the data, my fear is it's generalized to the point where it may look, make a district like Merrimack look like it's spending too much in a particular area, when in fact it's required by federal statutes. So, I guess that's my overarching concern with what this.
Sure. So, one thing that's relevant here is that, this is a case study approach, so it's not really trying to say that this is a representative sample of districts. And so that would be first and foremost in what's going on here. So with this type of approach, we're not looking to say District X spends Y, and District A spends B, and try to make those comparative evaluations. It's, I think, and again, it's really hard to speak to what the results will look like until I'm there. Pardon, but more, you know, what I think is, would be interesting is to say that District X considers their, say, their school counselor to be their salary to be a behavioral health expenditure, and District Y doesn't, or only says half of that counselor's time is spent on behavioral health stuff, and then the rest they work on, say, transitions to college or stuff that isn't really behavioral health. So, it's really not about coming up with a dollar figure and calling out individual districts and what they're spending, and what they're not spending, what they should be spending. It's really trying to say, is there a common lexicon here? What, you know, can we come to some agreement? What are districts calling behavioral health expenditures, et cetera? So I don't know if that's really satisfying or not, only to say that, the goal of this is really to get at what are things being labeled and called, and not. And I don't foresee there being a table that lists out a district's expenditures in any sort of detail. This is going to be a four-page general brief that's really interested in bigger picture stuff.
Okay, yeah, as long as it's not some underlying approach to be able to look at individual districts and what they spend, and things like that, as long as it's, you know, economies, what one district does that others can learn, or that generally you can learn a way of approach is done, like Merrimack, maybe they do something that's much more efficient, or they categorize something different that other districts could look at, or you could report back. That's better. I was just worried, when you talked about RSA and reporting, and then you doing a study, it was, it raised a little bit of a red flag, so.
Sure.
Great, thanks.
Naomi.
Hi, thank you for coming. Now I have a little bit of a laundry list, because I was listening and learning from other people. But the first thing I was wondering is, if you could clarify also, because for folks who are not here at home, we'll hear it later on, you mentioned an RSA, and then this, could you clarify the relationship between the Carce School of Public Policy and the RSA, how you end up fulfilling it?
So, we are funded through the Endowment for Health to do this work, and so, as a way to provide technical assistance and capacity to Departments of Health and Human Service and Education as they try to meet this, because it's, there isn't really a nice way for the districts to talk amongst each other, so we kind of serve as moderators and facilitators, and try to keep things on task to fulfill statutory requirements. So that's, that's what brings us to the table.
Thank you. Mike, you mentioned value, and I agree wholeheartedly. I would add to it, in addition to the things that the district gets, which I agree with, and I'll touch on in a second, I believe there's value in us simply contributing to the greater knowledge of the region of New Hampshire as a public school and district, and I think that has its own inherent value. But as far as us learning from it, is there any way that we could receive that, the report when it is? Because if it comes out of a few weeks, I might miss it. I don't always check the site. Can we close that loop somehow, either through the board or through, yeah?
Yeah, so it's, it will be released with it publicly and available on our website as soon as it's out, so it's public domain.
But.
Oh, of course. Oh, yeah, everyone that participated in, I was going to board on, sure.
That would be great, thank you. And last, Andrew, what you were just talking about, it sounds like it's relatively, relatively amorphous still what the data will look like in the end, which makes sense, but, yes, Andy, okay. Is there any kind of assurance that you could give at this point, that that endpoint might not shift and begin to bring in the concerns that were brought up? That it wouldn't be disseminated by district?
So, I can't, I don't see a case where it would be, I worry about kind of hemming myself into a position that I later can't back out of, right? So, I'm really hesitant to say, that we wouldn't say district, to make a comparison here or there about this district has the bulk of their expenditures in personnel, and this district, you know, about 20% comes from professional development and more programmatic investments around socio-emotional learning or something. So, I would be very surprised if there isn't some discussion of variance between the district, but there's, a listing out of table of data is not something I'm interested in, so I'm not going, I'll be writing the report, so I don't see why that would ever happen.
Thank you, that's all for me.
Okay. Mike, could I add some more?
I just wanted to make a statement of clarification for the viewing audience, that the study has no participation by students, it is just our financial sharing with the study, so, thank you.
Correct.
Okay. And I actually had a couple of questions. So, how many of the six districts that you're looking to study have already been secured by you at this point?
I would say there's two that are basically wrapped up, and there's a couple more, probably around where, in that they're collecting data and we have a date set to meet.
So we're like, kind of last to the, to the table to start collecting data, would you say?
Yeah, unless the district had been collecting this for other reasons, you know, but it's, I don't think it's going to be a really onerous data collection process, that I don't, that's not, that's not what my sense is so far.
Well, the reason I'm asking is to segue into, what are your deadlines? I know that it's the summer, we don't meet as often as a board, so what are the deadlines to compile the data so that you can prepare the brief and publish it on your deadlines?
I think we're looking at probably late October to be a publishing date, and the other report that it informs is due December 1st, so we've got a little bit of runway with that.
Okay. So we always, sometimes when the studies come to us, it's one of those, you know what? We're a little late getting here, and that's why I was asking about how you're coming along, and if we're going to hold up the process if we held off, but, you know, if, obviously if it's nothing of concern, sometimes we'll even do it the same night. So depending on how, you know, the discussion goes, the biggest thing is if there was a time crunch, we had to make sure we were acknowledging it. And then, the question I also had, which, you know, if you can't, that's fine, but do you know, are all five other districts identified, signed on, and if so, can you share who they are?
I would say that they're spread around the state. I haven't had the conversations with all of them, do you mind if you're, you know, if I share your names? But I sense that there isn't much apprehension about them sharing their names.
Okay. So, and then, how do you see the state government and Concord using this data? As far as, we're talking about funding, and we get state funding, so where do you see how this might influence how Merrimack is funded for some of the initiatives that this identifies?
I think that it might be getting into crystal ball territory for me, but I think that most people, I'll speak, generally, most people see this, this push to comply with the system of care as a really good way to elevate needs that aren't being met, more than to try to call out inefficient spending. So, I just, I guess, that's not really a conversation I've heard being had that around the state folks that I work with, that they're worried, they're excited that this will lead to greater state buy-in, not the other way.
Great. And that's really what I was looking for, do you see state buy-in? Maybe I was, maybe I didn't frame it as a positive, but I think we as a district are taking a great initiative to make sure that, you know, the mentally well child is being addressed in our district, so, you know, how are we allocating our resources, what resources are still required? That's a big part of what we've been discussing regarding formulating our budget for the next year, and the next year or two. You know, we've done a lot in this district, you know, Chief Justice Broderick has come in a couple of times already, because he realizes our commitment to the well child and what we're doing. And I think that this data will help us to realize, you know, are we doing our fair share to make sure that we're setting our staff up for success to do that? Are we, are we just right, do we need a little bit more, do we, are we ahead of the curve? You know, those kind of things, where are we at? It's going to be a good measure for us, a good data point for us to measure where we're at. So, I'm actually looking at this as quite the positive for long-term, so. So, and the study will be now annually?
The study wouldn't be annually, this is kind of a one-off.
A one-off, okay.
Case study, so we're not sure where it would head from here, but every year through 2019, the state needs to report on expenditures, so.
Okay.
If anything, it will be, the data will become more robust as years go on, that's where people think it's headed.
Okay. I will take a motion if there's one to be had, and we're good.
Okay. I move that we approve the request for school district to participate in a New Union University of New Hampshire research study regarding children's behavioral health expenditures in schools.
Is there a second? Second by Michael. Did you want to speak to your motion?
I think it's wonderful that this data is going to be collected, and I hope that there's more of the same, and that we get to reap the benefits of having it.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments before the vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none, and the motion carries 400. Good luck on your studies, and we look forward to the brief.
Thank you.
And we're on to item number four, which is further information regarding the feasibility of putting in addition onto the high school for SAU special services offices. So, Marge and I will be taking this on, and we have some guests here that are very interested in this conversation, so I'll let you take it over.
Thank you. We do have some guests, and I would ask them to come forward. We would be interested in having all four of you present, and it is four members of the planning board, Bob Best, the chair, Alastair Mills, I believe the vice chair, Nelson Disco, and Lynn Christensen. And we're just so glad that all four of you could come, especially in the summer, in August. So I want to just set the stage by telling you about a phone call that I put in to Bob, and then Bob in turn made contact with the other members. It really goes back to a memorandum that was sent to me, representing the district, and it was from the planning board, and it was dated December 21, 2016. This is after we had gone before the planning board at an annual, annual meeting, if you will, to talk about our capital improvement plan for an outlying six years. And we're always very interested to see what the planning board will say in conjunction with what we present, especially about the necessity of the item. On the front page, one of the things that it said was this, "The board voted to recommend the following: All options should be considered for the consolidation of special services SAU offices, including consideration of an addition to the high school in place of the current building." And that is the piece that I wanted to focus on, because I really wanted you, the governing board, to have clarification about why this statement was made, because as we go forward to prepare our next capital improvement plan, that becomes very important. And as an option, if we were going to address that option, there were certain things that we needed to do. And I think you, having heard from me last meeting in July, really were asking more about how it came to be and that kind of thing, and I really couldn't explain any further. So who better than the planning board members themselves to be able to come and be able to dialogue with you? So that is called setting the stage, and so, Shannon, please.
So thank you. Bob, welcome, and welcome to your staff, your board. I think that we, at our last meeting, had a very, we wanted to make sure we're doing things with a clear vision and an understanding of expectations. The concerns that we had at our last meeting, I don't know if you've watched it, is that we're going to be spending money for an architectural study for an addition to the building that we feel may not be the right fit for the district, but also may create unintended additional costs for things like retrofitting, and to spend thousands of dollars to get a simple answer to that. We wanted to know if your expectation was for us to take those, that depth of step to vet that option. So I was hoping you can give us kind of what your board's thoughts were as you were suggesting that in your memo.
Okay. Well, thank you, Madam Chair and Superintendent Chaffrey, for inviting us and allowing us to be here. I'm Bob Best, the Chair of the Planning Board. Let me offer a little bit more of some background and teeing it up in addition to the information that Marge offered. The planning board has not had an opportunity to meet between the time that she and I spoke about coming here and tonight. Actually, we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night. And so, we looked at the calendar and the schedule, and they said, well, if we don't come tonight, because we haven't met yet, and then we get on your next schedule, and then we both meet on the same night, actually, we're on the schedule, I don't know how we're going to do that, because we're in the same room, but anyway.
Some wrestling.
It looked like it would be a long time before we could kind of get this all coordinated together, if we waited until the planning board had a chance to meet first and formulate some message to you. So, what I did instead was invite all the planning board members to come here as individuals, and I'm here as an individual, and I can remind and convey what I remember from the discussion last December, as each of them can, but I have to offer that it isn't an official message of the planning board, where the board had sort of considered on what to present and what to provide to you. So, let's turn to sort of the discussion about SAU offices, and you guys probably know more than I would ever know in terms of how long the process has been going on with trying to get a new SAU office. It seems like it's It seems like it's been a part of the capital budget discussions as long as I've been part of the planning board. And so, each year, the planning board gets an opportunity with the, the town and the school district and the library and the water district and all these folks to look at what their capital improvement plans are. It's driven by statute that says we get that level of involvement, and your organization, as well as the school, the town and others, come forward and explain the different projects that are on the agenda, and there is a system of ranking them by whether they are urgent or necessary or desirable, or, you know, some other choices that are on the menu. And sometimes urgency is driven by health and safety, like the asbestos projects that you guys have been doing, or roofing projects that you've been doing. And then other times, there's something that either you or the town or somebody else that's before us presents being way, way far out in the future, six years out, and we still don't really have all of our details worked out. And although that may, that thing that's six years out may certainly be important, it's hard to call it urgent if you're putting it that far out. So we go through this process of ranking the things that we have before us, and we've seen a discussion about the SAU office as a standalone building, and I know that that's gone before the voters a time or two, and it struggled to get the support that it needed, or not struggled, it hadn't gotten the support that it needed. And so there was some discussion last fall, last December, about, you know, where do we go from here with the SAU office? And I think from the planning board standpoint, at least I've always understood, well, having visited the SAU office a time or two, there, there's a great need. There's, there's, I don't think there's anybody who would argue that it isn't a tough situation in the office you're in in terms of the condition of the building, in addition to the constraints for space and all the things that you've got to do. I don't know that there's consensus among the boards about the various proposals as to what to do for a new SAU office, and I think that kind of reflects some of the sentiment that voters come to the polls with. Should it be a freestanding building? Should it be a particular size and all of that? So as a part of last December's meeting, there was some notion that came forward, I don't remember the source of it, but what I remember was someone suggested that the north part of the high school, the three-story part of the building, was originally built with expansion in mind, that it was sort of predisposed to being expanded on that north face. That may not be true, you guys may know better than I do, but that was the discussion. And if that was the case, that the building was designed with that in mind, that perhaps that could mean that some pre-thought or pre-development had been done in a part of that construction that would make it a little bit easier, a little bit better, a little more affordable to do an expansion on that site. And that's really kind of the genesis of the conversation. There's other conversations about exploring whether there's existing space without building an expansion within the school system, as well as the discussion of the freestanding one. And I think that the intent of the planning board and its message was not to necessarily say that we have a preference for one design over the other, as much as to say, please look at all of them, and please look at all of them with an open mind toward determining which one is, is the most workable. And it may be that it's economics that drives what's workable, but it may also be function and, and the, the other things that go on in the building. I could certainly see that an SAU office, by the nature of its work, could benefit from some separation from students and, and faculty that are operating in a school environment. I could also see that just the layout of the building could require some things. All of those things, I don't know the details of, and I don't think that the planning board is intended to kind of intrude on your ability to make those decisions, as much as we wanted to know, have all these different options been explored thoroughly? Your specific question, did we envision that you would, you know, have a architectural study or something like that? I don't know if I can give you a specific answer for that, maybe you'll hear from some of my board member colleagues about their opinion of it. I think from my part, I wasn't necessarily the driver behind the request, the person that raised the issue. I was sort of following along with the conversation and enjoying it, but thinking what I really wanted, would expect is that there was some concreteness to the exploration, to say, here's why we decided what we've decided and why we ruled out the things that we didn't decide. But hear from some of my colleagues and find out what they think, whether they were actually imagining some in-depth, either architectural or engineering efforts towards this or not. So, there's my two cents so far. I don't know, Alistair, you want to go next?
Well, I think the other thing that, I suppose to some extent, and those of you know me, know that I drive a school bus, although not for this town now. I go to most of the school districts in the southern, anywhere south of Plymouth State, I think I've probably been to all their school districts carrying sports teams. And when I go, it's very noticeable, particularly all the new high schools which have been built, and there's plenty of them, as we well know, most of them now have their SAU offices built into those buildings. I can go through them if you really want to, but I'm sure if you, you'll know as well as I do, that these have all got their SAU buildings attached. Partly I see that as an advantage, I, I also understand you don't necessarily want the students banging into you, but it does to my mind mean you can, you've got the sort of space of facilities that are available at night, which aren't always used at that time. And I could see, trying to compare these schools that I visit, that you could well use the facilities of the, of the high school at night, and I'm familiar with them, I come into this high school at night with sports teams, volleyball, wrestling, basketball. I know what's not in use at night, and I just wonder whether you couldn't come up with a solution that would be more cost-effective in the eyes of the citizens of the town, and you might get a better chance of getting a vote than having something that's remote and which must cost more, I would say, than building onto the side of the, of the high school. It's based on what I see, it's what I just sort of think as an engineer and a sort of ex-businessman. I just wonder, I think it would have some attraction, and I think it would give you a better chance with the voters. That's my opinion, it's, you can disagree with me, and I'm sure there are people who will. I just recommend it as, as something you should consider.
I think I wanted to, respect what Alistair had to offer, but also with, to the idea that we as a planning board have some knowledge about whether it's more or less expensive to do one thing or the other thing. I think we're a whole board full of engineers, there's too many of us on there, it's like eight of, seven of us that are engineers. One of the others, Mike Redding, who isn't here, when I invited him to come, he said, you know, interesting, great to come and share the information, but his first instinct was to think that it probably wouldn't be less expensive to attach to the, so, I don't know that we necessarily are on, on the edge of saying, we think we know which one would be more or less expensive, but. Nelson, Lynn, do you, either one of you guys want to weigh in?
Okay. I just would probably, if I were to start at the beginning, I would second all the things that Bob said. I think it's important that, excuse. Okay, thank you. I put it off by mistake. I would like to second all the things that Bob said, I think he expressed it well, as to what we did as a planning board. We weren't trying to second guess the school district or anything, but just to offer it as a suggestion, it seemed to be viable, it seemed to have some possibilities, as, as Alistair has pointed out, and, and just have a look at it. And that was about as far as we took it. And this is a one-night discussion with a lot of other things on the agenda as well, so, that'd be my statement on it, yeah. Lynn?
Lynn?
I'm probably the driver of this, when people mention somebody, somebody asked, I've been asking this for a number of years. I've got a little bit of a unique perspective on this, because I sit at the elections every single year, and I listen to people, and when we've proposed this in other years, I listen to the people that are coming into the elections and talking about how they're going to vote and why they're going to vote. New building versus expansion and cost is one piece of it, but I'm looking at the perspective of voters and what they will approve, and I think that's something that you need to We're not only talking about the SAU offices, but I believe we're talking about special My history of special education goes back to 30 years, and what's been in that building, never mind what's been in the, in the superintendent's office, is just unacceptable, is, is putting it mildly. Those facilities need to be bulldozed, I'm sorry, they're just, there's nothing there that's usable, we need to do something. And I'm looking at what I think, from listening to people in town, they will approve, and that's where I'm coming from. There's a couple of things that have been mentioned. If we expand where the, the end of the high school is, and this goes to non-school hours as well, in that you've got some space there that could be jointly used during school hours, during non-school hours, for the benefit of parents who can't get to the school during those hours. So I think there's, there's something to be said there. The joint use of, of facilities, I think, is, is pretty big. And I'm not talking about expense, because I think, I don't have any clue as to whether which one is going to be more expensive. I'm thinking about which one is going to be more effective and appropriate for not only the school, but for the parents and the children of this district. And I think it's worth looking at expanding that space to get something that's approvable by the voters in a timely fashion.
Okay, so, I'm not sure that was the specific answer to hiring architects or hiring engineers and doing some of those investigations, but it probably is the best replay of the conversation from last December as you could possibly get without rewinding the tape and just watching it over again, so.
And, and I think that was definitely, I mean, the question that we were asking is definitely the concern, is when the planning board comes to us, we know that you are, you can be great communicators of our vision, and if it's not in line with what your vision is, it can also create what I would call a, a political message. And I think that was a concern that we had as a board at our last meeting, is if we don't go to the ends of the earth to, you know, spend the thousands of dollars to do these studies, you know, are we setting ourselves up for failure, even if this independent building is considered the best economical and logistical option? So we're always worried that when, when the suggestion goes out, if it doesn't go, I guess, if it doesn't get the depth of, of study, and how much, how much is, is it worth to the taxpayer for us? Do you want us to spend $10,000 to tell the taxpayer it wasn't the right choice? And, you know, would you think that that would be, you know, based on your opinions, a good use of our money? So it's, it's become a, a challenge for us. I think that's, that was the spirit of the board's discussion at the last meeting. I know Michael has hand up, and I think Andy also does. So I'm going to let Michael go first, and then Andy, and we can ask questions of.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight, I appreciate it. I think that I'm the driver, maybe, of you guys being here from last meeting, I'm not sure it was, but I, I just want to, I want to, maybe I did not convey, and maybe it was, if anybody watched it in the last meeting, really what my consideration was for spending the $4,000. I, I believe that we should consider it, but I think that there's steps to being considered, and that's why I had asked for the administration to actually go and get fire codes first, as a first step before we spent money and actually went forward with that. I'm sure if the fire department came forward and said, hey, no, there's not really a lot of codes, then, yeah, if we wanted to go to that next step, I believe that I would be behind that expenditure at that point. But my first feeling or inkling, being a homeowner of a house from 1940, is that codes can definitely come into play, so, that's kind of, I, I want to make sure that you're conveyed that I'm not wiping this off. I personally don't believe it's going to be cost-effective, but I could be wrong, and if I'm wrong, I will definitely adjust my, my thought process there, as I have in the past, so. I just want to make sure that I get that out there, that I'm not saying we shouldn't do anything, but I just think that we should take steps that are very inexpensive than possibly cost and stuff like that, so. Just want to make sure, thank you.
Andy?
Yeah, so, one of my roles on the board is to be the liaison into the planning and building, and we see the, the chair is sitting in the back listening intently here. As you've said, the school district has been talking about an SAU sped building for, like, ever. I don't know if it goes back 10 years, but it's at least about that long. We've actually only gone once in front of the voters for SAU sped building. Believe it or not, it's only been once. Maybe seem like a lot, a lot more than that.
It seems like more than that.
Yeah, but only once we've done, and we didn't, obviously we didn't get the, the votes that were required to bond it, obviously there. But it's interesting, if you go back and you look at what the planning and building committee has researched over the years, they've looked at all the different things. And, and if, if you go back, the proposal was voted down by the voters was for a standalone, you know, brick building, or, not a stick building, I mean, standalone. There was one point, we looked at available space within all the schools to see, was there a single school we could put everything in there? Unfortunately, it's, if you put everything together and you rearrange all the schools, you might be able to do space, but that's not the way the schools are divided today, so that wouldn't be easy to do. The planning and building, when we had, I had some conversations with the members, and they shared that looking at adding on to a school had been considered, but the Pandora's box that you open up when you look at adding on to a school, is that you then bring into question, which Mike brought up, and we, we've also talked a little bit, around what does it do to the, the codes in the building that you're opening up? Because, Alistair, you talked about going to schools where they have new high schools, they put the SAU in it. It's a whole different story if you're building a brand-new building with that in mind, so you can put everything in and it's all baked in, versus taking a building that's been there for 10 years or longer and adding on to it, because then you expose the, at least that section of the building up to the new codes, which is the concern I think we all had, is, are we opening a Pandora's box, not only of the cost of the bricks, bricks and mortars to build it, but also what do you have to then retrofit to the rest of the building to be able to do it? So those are the concerns that we've had, and the reason, I think that I'm glad that you guys, you came, is that what we wanted to make sure is that we didn't have to come through with a full-blown, you know, architectural design of that concept, along with the other options that we thought might be more attractive, versus maybe stopping short and saying, we've researched to this point, and this is why we think maybe it's viable or not viable. That's, to us, it's what it is. Mike talked about being pragmatic of money that we spent, as we take steps along the way, the costs increase. You know, we can get an initial engineering idea, we can talk about codes, we can go to the next level and get a preliminary architectural, and then it's a little more money, and then if we go to the next one to say, what would the footprint look like, and how many floors would it be, and how would you make sure that you don't have a cross-pollination of traffic during the day between high school students and special ed students and SAU things? There's a lot of considerations that we just came across in our initial conversations that we have to do, so. What we wanted to do is, is hear what you had to say, but also share with you the sort of our mindset, that we're, we're trying to do what's right for the, the voters, the taxpayers, both from a cost and what's the right thing to do perspective. And, and that's, you know, will we be ready this year to put it in front of the voters? I don't know. We, 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 there's a lot of considerations of other things we're doing budget-wise, but it's sort of us looking at all the different options that we've got to look at and be able to prepare, so.
Thank you for all those comments. So I, I agree with the approach of being pragmatic and saying, you know, let's, let's explore these things as, as efficiently as we can to figure out what works. I have to tell you that part of the message that's coming back from you guys to us is, we know this won't work, how much do we have to show to prove that to you? And if you've pre-decided that it won't work, then frankly, you don't have to do studies to convince the board of that, but, because even if you had those studies, we would have known that you prejudged it, and you found the studies that supported the prejudgment. If you're open to the idea of exploring it to find out if it's viable on a level playing field with other ideas, and genuinely trying to figure out, will it work? I think that any of the information that you get could be useful in deciding one way or another. But if you've really decided that no matter what you explore or what you find out, this isn't the direction that you're going to go in, then I don't think it makes sense to spend any money at all pursuing it. I mean, it, it, of, of course, when the board receives, the planning board or the voters receive it, you know, they, they've got to decide how thoroughly other options were explored as well. But, again, if it's the case that you guys already know what you want to do, then, I mean, I don't want to be short or curt, but what's the point of doing these explorations?
Naomi?
I think you bring up a very important point. For me at least, I have my own opinion as to what I think the outcome would be of such studies. I think it would be more expensive, but that doesn't mean that if it came back and it said it would be less expensive, I would reject that outcome. I think that it's important to explore it, and so I think that what would be helpful for me, if, if you're willing to And so I think that what would be helpful for me, if, if you're willing to share your experience and expertise on this, is what would you consider to be a level of exploration that would be satisfactory for that? In other, in other words, when you think about that site, if you were looking at that site and trying to determine it, then, then what would you be looking for in order to make that determination?
It's an interesting question, because what you look at to make that determination depends on whether you're exploring it with a desire to figure out, is there a way to make this work? If you're doing the exploration to see how many barricades we can find real fast, then, you know, that's not really all that useful for what we were looking for. So, if you're looking to solve problems, and you look through the school, and you said, hey, when we hold school board meetings, the high school's got some existing space, and we could at least dual-purpose that bit of space. Or the high school's got some places where we could do some student testing for special education, and we could dual-purpose some of that space. So, there's some payoffs to doing kind of a joint thing. And then, on the other side, it's going to, there's some code issues to deal with, or some construction issues to deal with, and kind of really giving it an open-minded evaluation of, can we make this work? Does it make any sense? However, you know, I just want to caution everyone that if it's really just a matter of seeing, what does, what do you got to do to convince the planning board that you've found enough obstacles to know that this wasn't your way to go, you know, we don't want to put you through that exercise either. So.
Michael?
So, I understand your statement, and I have put out there that my opinion, I believe that it is not cost-effective, but I do not stand here for myself. I stand here for the taxpayers of Merrimack. So I'd never let my initial opinion make a decision on how far something should go. So, however, I do like to take steps that are most cost-effective for the taxpayers. And that's why I personally felt if there was a ton of codes that would be an issue, that might be the first step to understand whether it's effective to go forward. I'm here to, I believe that we need a superintendent's office. I, I mean, it's pretty evident. So that's the solution I'm trying to help get to the end to. So, I'm not sitting here saying that, oh, I already don't think we should attach a building, and we should just stop and, stop at that point. So, I think, though, what we're trying to ask is that if, if we continue, if we do find, it's ineffective and costly based off of the initial step, and we present that to you, is that going to be adequate? I mean, you're saying that, well, if you think that it's not going to go forward, you can find a way to stop it. But if, if you think that it's positive, you can probably find a way to keep going forward. I mean, we got both sides, so we're just trying to figure out, okay, at, at what point do we stop focusing our resources so that we can find an effective end? And, and, I mean, there's, I, I understand your statement. I actually take a little bit of offense to it, because I think that we're trying to find a solution. And I think that you can sit here and definitely say, oh, none of us want it, but I think all of us want a superintendent's office. And, and I, I agree with Alistair that it would be great to have it on the same building. I think that there's great benefits there. And, however, I'm not sure that's going to be cost-effective. So for me, the reason that I pushed for the codes was that we were looking at $4,000, and as I had pointed out in the last meeting, just two years ago, we couldn't buy two soccer goals that cost like $2,400 in the budget. So, that's kind of the detail that I'm getting at, and I'm not trying to stop it, I'm just trying to take an approach that's pragmatic to actually understanding what we should go forward with.
Sure. I understand, and I didn't mean offense by my statement, but I think that it was only fair to you guys to say that the message we're getting, or at least from the introduction, was that we don't really like this idea, and, and how much would we have to show you that it stinks for you guys to be convinced of that? Frankly, whatever we're offering is, is intended to be helpful and, and to be supportive. And if you guys are able to, to demonstrate that you evaluated all the different kinds of ideas, I don't think the planning board asked for anything more than that. If it turns out that it's able to be determined in an early fashion, that it's not a feasible thing, that's fine, but, you don't need my permission to say whether that's fine or not. It's not our place to, to do that and weigh that in, weigh, weigh in that way for you. But to Lynn's point, if you're looking for the support of the voters in town, some of whom we hear from, some of whom Lynn hears from even more, I think what they really want to know is that you've tried everything, that, you know, you've, you've lifted every stone and taken a look at all the different options, and, and not in necessarily a cursory way, but in a really meaningful way. So, with that, I don't want to necessarily tread down that path any further and make it seem like I'm insulting you guys any more than that. I don't, don't mean to. I really don't.
And could I perhaps just add? I mean, I've sat on the planning board, not as long as Nelson, of course, but it has come up. You're right, Andy, it's come up a lot. And I don't think any of us doubt the need, I mean, and I've been in that office, to have my fingerprints taken when I drove for Merrimack. I know that office needs demolition. I mean, I cannot agree more with Lynn. I'll drive the bulldozer through it. It's awful.
It's yellow.
Well, it's awful. And I would hope we can come together to find something that, in the end of the day, you feel is the best solution, and you're able to convince, or put before us that we can go along with it. Yeah, they've tried, they've looked at it, they've, they've listened to our ideas, and we were wrong, or we were misguided, or we didn't have enough input. And I understand the problem, is the cross-vertigation, what goes on in the building during the daytime. Cost isn't the only thing. I know it's got to work, because you've got people, and the young students, and some of the students who need more than others. That's got to be the, the overall riding concern. But, you know, when I do see, and not, when I say the high, I did say high, brand-new high schools, but there is one that is, just was modernized a bit, and they did the same thing. I am trying to just offer what little knowledge I get from wandering around the state, and I probably see more high schools than probably anybody else in the course of 12 months.
Could, could you possibly share that high school that just did it?
Timberland Regional did, did, they did some work, and because they have the middle school and the high school are effectively one building, they put something in the middle, which seems to be their new, they put their SAU offices in there. But I know that all the others, I mean, Sanborn Regional, Bedford, most of them have, have built brand-new SAU offices as part of the high school. But yes, I'll agree with you, normally off to one side. I can't argue that. It's been on the side. If you go to Sanborn, you go in the door, the school is that way, and the SAU is that way. This has been the trend, but I just bring it forward because I see it. I'm very fortunate that I have the opportunity to see all these schools.
Just, just to elaborate a little bit, you don't need to convince the planning board of what you're doing. You need to convince the voters that this is worth doing. And I don't know that they necessarily look at the expense, they look at whether this is doing the right thing, and if they get the impression that you are not looking at options, and I'm not making any judgment whatsoever as to whether you have made up your minds one way or the other. I don't believe you have. But I think you need to convince the voters that you have looked at the options, and for whatever reason, this is the best one, because they're the bottom line. We aren't, you aren't, the voters are the bottom line, and you need to convince them that this needs to be done, and there's no question that it needs to be done, but how it needs to be done in order to get a passing vote.
And Lynn, to that point, I think, the meeting after we see you every year in April, the first thing we do, and I just want to give you comfort in this, is we sign a code of ethics, and we read it line by line, and usually there's a roomful of kids sitting through it with us, and, you know, God, God bless them. But what we do to go line by line to the voters here, what, what standard we hold ourselves to. And every year, we sign in front of the voters on camera that we will put the needs of the students first, we will put the, you know, to produce a positive education, we will put the needs of the taxpayers in every decision that we make. We do that. Every time we make these decisions, not one or the other side is, is isolated. So with that, you know, this has been vetted for a very long time. I know I was on planning and building starting in 2005, so it was a pre-existing condition to my arrival, so we can talk, you know, close to 15, 15 to 20 years. We're in that 15 to 20-year range. This is the first time we've heard of the planning board having an interest of the addition to the high schools. Now, we've just added kind of a layer to our onion, and I've been on the board for seven years, and I was on planning and building from five to, was it, five to eight? So with that being considered, in 12 years of my exposure to this school district, this is the first time it's come up, and we've done a lot of work in those 12 years preparing for the presentation of it. So, we're now just kind of given a side job of, of what to vet, and, and for us, you know, that is taking us a little back, and it is a step back to take a step forward in, in what we're trying to do. In response to your letter, in response to our discussion at our last meeting, we did get a letter, which I know we're going to go into depth with with the next couple of bullets in this item, the steps that it would take to properly vet the opportunity for it, and we will, we do hope that you'll stay around to listen to what those are. We don't take any of it lightly. When we come before the planning board, we do it for a very, not because, you know, we do it because we have to. I'm not going to lie to you, we, of course, we have to. But we also do it because we want to. We want a second set of eyes. We, we take value in coming to your board meetings and getting a fresh, out-of-district perspective of the needs of our district. And sometimes you do see the insides of our buildings, sometimes you don't, depending on what members you have, but we listen to you because we know that you're another, a fresh perspective. But at the end of the day, I do hope, if you don't have a copy, I'd be glad to have a copy provided to you of, of how we do business with that code of ethics. We can absolutely provide that to you. And just know that that's how we do business here, and, and it's, it's not to come to a decision at the beginning of the conversation, it's to come to a decision at the end of it, and then put it forth to the voters. So, that's always been, in my experience, you know, the right way to do things in the Merrimack way here, so, you know, as, as Marge puts it, but I think she's branding all of us to that.
I don't, I don't think you're going to get any argument from the board that, that we believe that you are following those, those ethics. There's no question. We're just looking at the voters, and we want something approved.
Good. And, and we're with you there. And we, the thing is, I think we know that you, your opinions, as we do come to you for these things, carries value, that they're not just listening to our means, they're listening to yours. The plugged-in voter, who, the, the few that do make it, come, and, and are plugged into both, and they're passionate. And so, you're, not, well, okay, not always, Lynn, I know, you've got the counts.
The 18% who vote, or the other night?
She's not plugged in. She's like a power strip over there, honestly. But on that note, we just honestly, you know, we know that, you know, your opinion, if, you declare it not fully vetted, it's, the taxpayer will declare it not fully vetted. I'd never want the taxpayer to think we didn't spend enough time on this, because we're going on two decades. So I just wanted to kind of leave it at that from, from a board perspective. And I think Michael's hand was up, but it's in the corner of my eye, so, I was on a roll.
I just want to say, Lynn, I do appreciate you bringing this forward, and I think that it is something that should be discussed and presented to the individuals, that all options have been reviewed. I, I don't think I disagree with that at all. Mine's just the process of getting to whether it's worth it or not, so, but thank you.
That makes, I mean, again, I don't think that we had in mind that there would be three studies that had to be done, or that had to have an architect or an engineer sign off, or, or anything in particular. I think it's just the, the sense that there was some in-depth kind of review of, does this make any sense? And i- if so, why? And if not, why not? You know, with some, with some meat on the bones, you know?
I see Matt touching the microphone. Are you?
No, I'm just waiting, that's all. I'm just waiting patiently.
Well, on that, I think it's going to give the, are you guys, Naomi?
No, this is just a stray thought at the end, because I'm the newest member of the board, and I'm meeting some of you for the first time. And I just wanted to, to put in there that my takeaway from this conversation is that, from your perspective outside of this board, our reasoning is not clear, and that we may want to look and make sure that the choices that we're making are put forward in a way that, that do make sense. And if we think we are, we haven't quite accomplished that, and that's incredibly valuable. So thank you.
Andy?
I would offer that, in part, your reasoning is very clear that those current offices need something, and we've, want to help you bulldoze them and all that for how bad the current ones are. It's the choices in terms of the next thing that I would love to know more about.
Andy, and then I think, Marge?
Yeah.
You're next?
I was just going to say really quick, I said, part of it is, there are things that will be coming before us that will cause us to look, and there's things in the past that maybe have not been promoted as well, because when you go to the planning and building, a lot of options have been considered and maybe presented to the board that we've never elevated up to the planning board and say, we've looked at A, B, and C. So I think part of our exercise is to sort of share the works and not work, and things like that, to, to make sure that that's more visible. One of the things when we, when the, when the SAU sped building failed a couple of years ago, the first thing that we said was, we have to market it better, because it was not really understood, not clear. And we did the standalone building, right? So at the time, if we would have marketed better, done, you know, more tours through the buildings, more stuff like that, might have passed, maybe. But we're now two, two years beyond that, three years beyond that. We've seen what's worked with the town garage and turned, trying to promote that. There are things within the district that are going on, you know, the, the things that are happening in terms of size, and stuff that we have to look at in our planning this coming year. So, I think the key is, is that we're going to work closely with the planning and building to look at all these options, whether existing or new or whatever, and then, and then make sure that make you aware, as well as the voters, of why we've come up with whatever the recommendation is that we do, so you're aware of it, so.
Voters are the key.
Right. I know.
Voters, voters are the key.
But it helps us to explain to you, to build our story for the voters, right?
No question, but they're the ones you need to convince, and I need you, you need to focus on that.
And I think the trouble is, we've done this for so many years, we've sort of rested on it, assuming everybody knows the backstory, which we can't assume, so.
But Andy, I think your point with the Public Works doing their open day for everybody to look at the garage, which was equally a mess, was a good move by the Public Works. Sorry, Marge, but I think you have to conduct tours of your building on a Sat, on Saturday in about early March.
You know, I had suggested in my conversation with Marge on the phone, that if the school board felt appropriate to invite the planning board to tour the existing offices, I would support that, and then that would offer us an opportunity to talk about that at one of our meetings, and also help to get that message out for you guys, that your, your current facilities are in, in rough shape. And I think it would be interesting to actually do it, but it's also, I think, beneficial to you guys to have that conversation. And for the rest of the messaging about a new thing, like Lynn said, we want to get something approved, you know, we want to see something that everybody will get behind.
Marge?
So, one of the things that I wanted to say, and I mean this sincerely, is, we have talked about this for a very long time, and I believe in the 15-plus years, never before have representatives from the planning board come to be with the school board to talk so openly. I walk away gratified by the fact that you realize that we need to be in a different and better space for both the people that are in special services and the people in our office. If the outcome is not known this evening, it doesn't mean that it won't be forthcoming. And also to our elected planning and building committee, who have done a lot of work, I think that's the thing, is that we've been about it a very long time, and it's hard to stick with something for a very long time. And so, tonight just opens up a portal, and perhaps something will spring forth. But I thank the four of you for coming tonight, because really, it, it was summer, and you, Bob, said openly, your meeting wasn't going to be until September 5th, and then we talked about the fact, oh, September, that's kind of pushing it off. And so the fact that four of you made yourself present tonight is gratifying. So I personally thank you.
Thank you for having us. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you all. So Matt, you had a couple of items that can also supplement this agenda item, so I'll put it over here.
Yeah, okay. One of the first things that I want to mention is, it was recently stated that the high school addition was built with a central office addition in mind. And having started here in September of 2000, standing with the then-superintendent, Mr. James O'Neill, looking at a pile of dirt in the ground, and he saying to me, here are some plans, here's $5.9 million, build a three-story addition. I want to let everybody know that that project was a design-build project, and there was no, or no, there was ever any consideration as far as the planning, as far as the design work, that any addition would be put further on that building. But that was a statement made here a little while ago tonight. So, let me move on into the first item that I have here. It was a request that I contact the, the fire chief or the fire department if we could get some free code analysis information from him. And I talked with Chief Courier, very gracious, always from him. And I talked with Chief Courier, very gracious, always a great help to us and the school district, terrific partnership amongst the school and the fire department. And Mike told me that what they usually do, and what they do with, with everybody, is we would have to hire a certified fire code engineer who would, if we gave him the amount of square footage we wanted to add on to the building, the type of use it would be, would go and then look through all the existing plans and then look at what are the current as-bills are, as far as what the high school currently has, as far as alarm systems, sprinkler systems, and whatnot. And go through and do a formalized report that he would then stamp with a PE stamp stating, these are the issues that need to be fixed, these are the issues that need to be taken care of. And then we would have to go from there and looking at those recommendations in order to try and get pricing for them, for that. But the fire code engineer to look at the high school, 164,000 square feet of it, look at all its various systems, because they don't all reside in one place. They're all scattered throughout the buildings because the high school in and of itself is a series of additions over the years. Everybody knows that. Additions which made sense because they're of the same use. Like when we put on the addition in 2000, that was school use, brick and mortar, metal bar joists and cement, all the same type of construction, blends right in. It's when you start mixing uses with the existing school structure buildings that you have the real issues. And so, the fire chief said I would have to hire a certified, in the state of New Hampshire, engineer. And he gave me around three, three names to take a look at. But we'd probably be looking at, you know, $30,000 to $40,000 for that type of study. So, the fire department cannot do that for free. They don't have the manpower. And they prefer, they like to look at something that's done by an outside party who specializes in this type of analysis. And then they get that and they ask the questions of them. So, that's how it's all presented. And that's the sequence of events that happens when you're looking at this type of expansion. Any questions on that?
Any on that? Okay. Keep going.
Okay. I did mention that if we wanted an architect to do something, it could be around $3,000 to $4,000. But we have a good relationship with Marinase and Associates. They designed the middle school. They designed Bedford High School, whose central office is down on County Road and not where the high school, middle school is. And so, there's a letter in your packet, and I'm going to read some of these, of some of the issues. And I'm not putting up stumbling blocks, as mentioned by, by Mr. Best. I'm just bringing into light some clarifications that need to be made before we would look at putting an addition or considering putting an addition on the high school that would consist of a central office utilization. So, they went through, first thing we have to do is to retain the service of a surveyor to update the 2010 site survey, to locate all the property lines constraints. And that's, that's pretty standard in the underground utilities. We would have to retain the services of a civil electrical engineer to provide a conceptual design for relocating existing utilities. Because right next to that high school where the addition might be is where the main gas line comes in for the high school. So, you can't put an addition up against a main gas line. You'd have to relocate those utilities and how that would all be engineered into the planning of any addition. We'd have to obviously get a mechanical engineer to look at the capacity and the arrangements of the existing high school services, meaning HVAC. That's one thing that the code analysis engineer is not going to do for us. The existing sprinkler system, could it handle an addition of 10, 20,000 square feet? The sprinkler system, they have to do a peak flow analysis. They have to see, do they have to put another riser in? There's two locations in the high school where there are sprinkler rooms. One's in the new addition, one's in the new addition. It's 17 years old. That shows you how long I've been here. So, anyway, one's in the 2000 addition and one's way in the back of the high school when it was first, first built. So, you'd have to look at that. You'd have to look at your, your heating system to see if that is, can be sustained, an addition of an additional 10,000 to 12,000 square feet. Your fire alarm systems, that would, that's what you get with the code analysis. But still, you have to have somebody price it out for you. Fire alarm systems, emergency lighting, communication, data systems, see how they could be expanded into the SAU, SAU office. The geotech investigation, just what the subsurface soil conditions are, I'm pretty confident on that one. So, because I know what the, when we did the foundation for the high school, it's pretty much all sandy over there. So, that wouldn't be, really pose a problem. Again, you know, he mentions we'd have to contract with a sprinkler subcontractor to take a look at the fire code engineers' analysis and the peak flow analysis. And to see if it could be expanded. If not, then we'd have to price that out. Remember when we did the sprinkler system, one of the last ones at Master Cola Complex, that was around a $650,000, not expansion, but addition to the building that we put in a number of years ago. And then he mentions on the second page, the code review of the high school. If we put an addition onto that building, are we going to need a new fire code, given that the existing high school, you know, would have to meet the code, given the reduced exterior wall area? The SAU is a business occupancy per the international building codes versus educational for the high school. So, there would be, the whole question of firewalls, do you have to put a new one in or do you have to put one in another location? Paul Marinase, who was part owner of the company, and I had a lengthy conversation about that. And then the meeting with the fire department to go over everything and then just kind of analyze the options for, while you're doing the addition to the high school, seeing that the central office is 20 feet away, you would have to level the central office and then provide temporary shelter, housing for us during that construction period. Because it's just, we're just too close. And I assume the addition would be more than 20 feet wide. It would be a lot longer than that, depending if you wanted to go up stories or you wanted to go horizontal. So, you'd have to look at providing temporary structures or housings, housing for us, modular classrooms, something to that effect. So, these aren't stumbling blocks. These are questions to be answered. And between what I got from Marinase, the architect, and the information that I got from the fire chief, you know, it all depends, what steps do you want to go as far as the expenditures of funds? I could call in another favor from the architect to get a written opinion, if you wanted a written opinion. And he might do that for gratis, seeing he's worked with us in the past. That may be an option, it may not be. I'll just put that out there for you.
Michael?
First, I'd like to, to thank you for entertaining my pipe dream of a free service, I guess. But thank you for this information here. And I guess, what you were saying is that possibly the written, but if you were to actually get more detail on this, this would be more than the three or four grand to try to get all the details correct.
I didn't pay anything for that. That was free. But if you, if you want to, if you, if you want to do a design and a cost and a budget based upon, based upon the assumption that you don't have to upgrade any codes in the high school, I could probably get you that for like, maybe, I don't know, 10, 15, something like that, that fact.
It might be worthwhile for me to take a step back and ask a question, just to start off here. If the SAU building was attached to the high school, how much back and forth, like, flow would there be between the two, to start off with? Like, would there, would they basically be separated, but just have like, maybe a doorway that connects them?
It would, it would be separated. And you wouldn't want to have the back and flow. You wouldn't want students to be able to get into the central office. And you wouldn't have the need for us to go into the high school halls, going through where the students are.
So, the true benefit is maybe just the ability for it to be right next to a school in the school district, to make it convenient for cross-meetings or anything like that. But it's, I'm just trying to think of, I'm not seeing the, what the overall benefit would be, other than being very close to each other.
Well, it's, right now, we're yachting close to the high school. It's convenient if we need to meet with the high school administration. It's convenient when we have our weekly staff meetings because we utilize their conference room. But then again, if you build another new central office, you would have a conference room to utilize in and of itself. It'd be part of the plan.
That comes to the cost savings that you might not need that if you-
Yeah, but that's, you know, we're talking about, you know, a different, different type of space. But yeah, we may not need a conference room. We could share that conference room with the high school like we've been doing for, since we built the addition back in 2001, 2002. So, that would probably be the across savings. But you wouldn't have other larger spaces that were part of the plan if you continue to want them to be, as far as a place for the board to meet. We don't want to go back to the cafeteria. We left the cafeteria for the confines of this nicer space here so people could hear what we were saying. And so, in the wintertime, we didn't have to bundle up and put the winter coats on in the cafeteria, so.
And we couldn't broadcast live either at that point.
But, that's not going to be a problem now, right?
It shouldn't with the new heat system. Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, we took care of that, so.
Yeah. So, it's a lot of considerations. But I don't, I don't, I don't physically see a need for anybody in the business office suite, in the lower level of the central office called the basement, to go over and, you know, go back and forth to the high school. I just, I just don't see a lot of advantage to it for our, from our standpoint.
Okay. Naomi, then Michael?
So, summing up, because I think I heard you mention two figures. One was the fire safety piece, and the other was the other piece in this letter. If we were going to fully explore to the point of knowing how much it would cost to build onto the high school, what would our outlay be to do that, roughly speaking?
It probably could be around $50,000. $40,000 for this, for the, for the fire code analysis by the engineer. And I, but I'd have to start with the plans and the design first. So, that's not going to get done pretty much overnight. That's going to take a few months to put together. And then the fire code engineer would take another few months. And it kind of puts you all beyond your, your striking distance of getting anything on the ballot this year. Not that that's necessarily a stumbling block if you choose it not to be.
Are you done, Naomi? Then Michael?
So, just going on Alastair's point of the ability to use, cross-pollinate the uses, I guess, do, would we have an understanding of possibly, or thinking about, not tonight, obviously, but just trying to think of what, what would be able to be used in the high school that may not need to be added to the build if it was attached versus if we were to separate the building somewhere else? So, kind of like, possibly a conference room. But is there, if we could actually think of, there's anything else, then we can possibly come up with an understanding of what would have to be built? And then maybe just getting a rough cost of just the building itself without the codes and stuff like that, like you were talking about? Does that make sense? Does anybody follow?
Marge, is there-
What I think we're in need of is knowing the direction the board wants to go relative to aligning ourselves with the planning and building committee, such that we know what we're coming forward with. Because Matt and I are getting ready to work on the capital improvement plan. And this particular item, it's where it gets plotted and how it does. So, in other words, we've gone forward and have some information in working on a freestanding dwelling. And I think if there is a thought of putting it elsewhere, it's trying to amass this information as quickly as we can, so that it becomes a viable option. Or at least you can, you know, you can look at A, B, and C or whatever. And I think we're up against time, always. But it's trying to, you know, be in service of the planning and building committee. And that's why I'm glad that Rich Hendricks is here tonight, so we could hear all this information. I mean, we can certainly go through and do a capital improvement plan and just put a number down and, and put it for next year. But I think we were hopeful that we'd have a real sense, perhaps, of what you were thinking, or what other information you wanted amassed for us to gather, so that we are going beyond that. And, and again, it really is in service of planning and building. And I think, I think what the prompt was, was when we did sit with the planning board and we take that night very seriously, and we heard another possibility, or a possibility renamed, if you will, it was like, you know, we've got to take this into consideration because we're going back to this group again. And so, the group could easily say, and what you, what have you done since you were here last, last December? So, I think it was not only what was said by the planning board, also to be in support of planning and building. And if we need to do anything other than give you an updated number for a freestanding building on O'Gara Drive, what else would you want us to do? And the difficulty is, now, as Matt lays out, it's spending some money. It's spending some money to get some information because we don't have that information. So, that's what we're up against, you know? And it might be for you to say, well, we've got to wait on it. We, we can't do it right now. And so, it's, it's time up against need, you know? And just knowing what your thoughts are at this, this juncture.
Naomi?
Are there any other considerations that seem to come to the surface that would help this? Things that come randomly to mind for me would be, if we build an SAU that's attached to the high school and it has its own purpose and is built towards that purpose, are we taking up land the high school may need for its own expansion at some point? That isn't something necessarily that I'm saying is true, but I'm trying to think, are there any things that we haven't put out there that would help guide the decision other than financial? Because some of the feedback we got is to not be thinking purely about the dollars and cents.
Matt?
Well, you're right. Because let's say, central office, let me go to the middle school, for instance. When we built the middle school, enrollments were really going up. And there was a fear that the middle school was going to outgrow itself. So, what we did when we designed the middle school, because it wasn't a design, it was a design-build project, but we did a lot of design work up front, so we could do a good job. And we designed the core facilities for around probably 900 students or so. Even though when we opened, there was 800, and now there's around 600 and some odd. So, we designed it with a little bit bigger course, and more bathrooms, whatever. So, we took all that stuff into account. And then at the, the west side of the school, when you're facing the front door and you look left, there's a parking area that goes around there. And then there's, between the sidewalk in the building, there's a lot of open space. So, we left that there with the possibility that if we needed to add on to the high school, high school, the middle school, we would do it in that location. See, because now it kind of makes sense. You're taking building, you're taking a like structure added to it. You're continuing that exit from the hallway that exits out that side of the building. And you're putting it right through to where it would exit, you know, six classrooms later. Because it was, I believe, six classrooms we were talking about at the time. And so, it was all like use. And so, it was something that was kind of planned for. Not necessarily structurally or whatever, but the core, the facilities was planned for that. And if you were to, let's say, remove central office from where it is, you would still have to do the code upgrades. But if you're adding more classrooms of the same ilk onto that building, three stories high, you could do that. And it would make more sense from a flow standpoint. Because now you're not putting any barriers between what the addition is, because they're classrooms and you want kids to flow through them, and like a central office would be. Because it's not classrooms. You wouldn't want kids to flow through them. So, I hope I kind of answered your question a roundabout sort of way.
Well, I think the one thing I would say is, you talked about having a rendering that we could get for gratis. Just basically, a basic opinion that we could have documented. I don't think that's a bad thing. So if that's something that could just basically talk about, kind of recap what that memo did, but you know, talk to us about how this option is or is not viable as, you know, you were offering at the end of your presentation. I think that at this point, once we get that, can suit us. Would you, I, I don't know if I'm, I have the will of the board on that, but I think that, you know, fifty thousand dollars is not something I'm going to spend on an idea right now. But if, if you have a, a ren, just a rendering.
If you want me to get a conceptual sketch and design, because there's going to be some considerable design.
I'm sure.
Because you do have that exit at the end of the high school, which we cannot block off.
Right.
So it limits how we can attach to that high school. And we're going to have to go up. We can't go that single story because the, the architects already took the single-story high school central office design and laid it on that plot of land. And it, it swallows up the entire area, including the parking, so that can't be done.
Okay.
So it has to be all redesigned and kind of, you know, moving the cubes around to see where it would fit. But that, that's something I could probably get a conceptual sketch on to see what it would look like.
And I just, I just want to make sure that we have a proper vetting. So if, if that does that, I think that that's the point that I, I personally think we want to go. And if I'm wrong, I definitely want to be, you know, told by, but I don't know which one was up first.
Mine's quick. I would just say that I agree.
Okay.
I don't disagree, but I'm wondering where that would leave us that's different than where we are now.
I just think that if there's a, a, a concept that wasn't vetted or even sketched out about a visual, you know, take a visual, an idea, make a visual concept of it. And we have the documentation of, of the cost to get to that concept in a practical application. I think it gives us just enough information to show that it was, it was explored. And I think we've spent a lot of times showing that we are willing to discuss it. I mean, we spent two meetings. I don't want to exhaust funds, but I think we're exhausting ourselves because it's going to be late tonight. But on that note, I don't, I don't want, as, I don't want the community, I don't want the planning building, uh, planning board to think that we didn't take this all seriously and that we are looking at it as a serious request, because it is. You know, and at the end of the day, if it's right, it's right. If it's, if it, um, if a sketch shows potential, it may just be the visual that we need to show that we might need to take a next step or visual that we might need to show that it's not the right next step for us. But anything we can do gratis, I, I honestly, at this point, is all I think we should do, knowing that to take a real, what I would call viable study would be in the fifty thousand dollar range. That, that's a person in our building. I, I just, I can't even see doing that. So I don't think, I don't think our planning board would ask that of us. I don't think that's anything they would expect of us. And we can probably, and if we can get it for the fifth of September, that's fine.
I can get on the phone tomorrow and see if I can.
Whatever you could do is appreciated and, you know, of course, still, I mean, yeah, thank you for all that they've done so far. So are we good? I feel like item number four is closed. And Mark, item number five. So I, the presentation of the district science curriculum final draft. And so I invite to the table Bill Morris, Pat Scott, Jeff Karen, Ashley Meehan, Keith Tanner, Jamie Cordero, Allison McGuire, and an intern from the class of twenty thirty-six.
Shannon, can I start?
Oh, please do, Mark. Thank you.
Yep. So while, um, while everybody is setting up, I want to just kind of just give a brief introduction. This is a really exciting night. So, and I really think, this is, this is what dedication looks like, I must just tell you. And the first public appearance of Danielle Lynn, correct? So, uh, who is, just tell us now, how old? So you're here, you're here. So we really appreciate your dedication, Rebecca, for being here because Rebecca and the whole team have been on this journey for a long time and in a sense have given birth to something not nearly as cute, but, uh, but something very important. So all I want to just say by way of introduction is that, um, you know, we often talk about the different reasons that we're proud about the way we do business in Merrimack. And, and I want to just say that one of the, one of the many reasons that I'm proud about the way we do business in Merrimack is that we have so many dedicated teachers who are willing to not suspend the job that they're hired for. They do that and they leave their job periodically to do another job for the district, which is to help create state-of-the-art curriculum for their colleagues. And they do it leaving their classrooms, knowing that they have to plan and, and make sure that no educational value is lost while they're doing this other work. That is additional work that they have to do and they do it willingly and have done it for a number of years. And so it is a tremendous team and it's been an example, I think, of the best that a school district can be because the alternative would be someone like myself sitting in my office alone, creating a curriculum that would be then mandated for teachers to do. I'm not a scientist, I'm not a science educator. Could I do it? Yes. Would it be the equivalent of what was developed? No. And there are districts that choose to operate that way. We never have done that. So in addition to it producing a document that is real from the perspective of application and teachers and research, it also allows for multiple things to happen at a single time because in addition to this, we have a team of teachers working on the phys ed curriculum and a team of teachers working on the math curriculum. And so we're able to get so much more done when we have teachers who are willing to do this kind of work. So this might be officially the last time that I have a chance to say it. So I really want to thank the teachers here for their dedication in working on this. And no team works well without a leader and Bill Morris has been the leader of this team. And anybody who's tried to, to be an administrator in any district and a curriculum leader knows that is also not an easy job to do. And so I just want to really thank Bill for an outstanding job over many years to lead this team in the work that you'll see tonight. So I'm going to introduce Bill now and have him just walk you through what we have that hopefully with two weeks on consent, you'll have a chance to maybe consider putting on consent in two weeks and improve. So Bill.
Yep. So, um, again, you know, thank you for having us this evening. You know, we have come, you know, through the years and tonight we come once more in celebration as we share with you our final draft of the curriculum. And we ask for your review of this document with the hopes that it will be on the September meeting's consent agenda. I'm joining with me tonight is Keith Tanner, Ashley Meehan, Allison McGuire, Jamie Cordero, Jeff Karen, Pat Scott, and Rebecca Vanderberg. Not able to be here tonight, but equally dedicated has been Joan McMahon from the middle school. And, you know, and I'd just like to say that it's been a real, you know, gift and honor, honor to be, have been able to work alongside such a passionate, dedicated and a committed group of individuals and, you know, I mean, I think of words like pioneer and, you know, and this work has really been like a calling to them. So as with other curriculums to date, this too was developed with a K-12 scope. It was developed in a way that builds towards science mastery, not developed in silos. Collaboration occurred across all grade levels to ensure a fluid trajectory. This curriculum was developed using the understanding by design model. This document was guided by the New Hampshire Curriculum Framework for Science and the Next Generation Science Standards. This was a first-of-a-kind curriculum development process which captured the voice of teachers as the curriculum was created. Throughout its development, educators and administrators were given opportunities to provide feedback. In essence, we could fill this room with every science teacher because they all had a hand in creating this. Each year, teachers at the elementary level were given updated curriculum strand drafts to pilot and offer feedback to the committee. Adjustments were made based on that feedback. Middle school science teachers collaborated to align their skills work with this curriculum format. The committee provided feedback prior to the teachers formally piloting the draft. At the high school, grade nine concentrates their studies in the physical science strand and grade ten in the life science strand. Additionally, during their high school experience, students are offered a variety of elective courses within all strands to prepare students for college and career. High school teachers collaborated to align the science competencies with this curriculum format. Established competencies were incorporated into the new curriculum as unit of studies. Big ideas and statements of desired results were developed within these units by the high school teachers. In a format similar to the one implemented by the Science Curriculum Committee, the committee provided feedback to the high school drafts. At this time, I would like to bring to your attention some components. So I'd ask that you go to your packets. And what we want to do is, so what you're going to go, it's about one, two, about six, about eight pages in. It'll be right past the gold sheet. And we want to go to, to the, to the first unit. It's the kindergarten life science unit for the five senses. Okay? And you guys let me know when you're, when you're with me, okay? Okay? And as, and, and if you can imagine, the teachers all have binders and so this is kind of laid out in, in this matter, right? And so under the heading, so under the heading, you will find the enduring understandings. These are constant through all grade levels and represent what each student should understand by the time they complete 10th grade. So we, we, if you, if you look at the enduring understandings over the, the grade level spans, many of these just flow through. On the, on the left of that page are the concepts being taught. Okay? And this one here, it's the five senses. The next one is vocabulary. And the, so these vocabulary words are the words that science teachers said matter. I know matter is a science word, but since that science, science needs to say matter in terms of the vocabulary of that unit. And the bolded words are the ones that the guaranteed curriculum, those are the words that this committee, committee, as they vetted, said, um, no teacher, um, no teacher can leave out. Those words have to be addressed. And then the next, the next column is the process skills and they are practices students use to carry out hands-on and minds-on investigations and experiments. Okay? So we're going to go down to the next page. And on the next page, on the, so, um, on, on the, on the right side, you have the big ideas. Okay? And the big ideas, these are statements that describe core scientific concepts, principles, and processes. And understanding the, and, um, understanding the big ideas will guide students to the enduring understanding. So we began with an enduring understanding on the first page and those big ideas helped the students get there. And then, um, next to the big ideas is the desired results. And these are specific statements of which students should be able to do by the end of each grade level to demonstrate their understanding of the big idea. This format is followed through every strand and every grade level with added complexity through all the grades. So if we, if we jump to 10th grade and I'm not, and, um, do you want to jump to 10th grade and then we'll go to every strand? No, no, right? And so if we jump to 10th grade, you, you would see the very same format. And so we really have a, 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 um, very, um, uniformed, um, so at this time, you know, we'd like to thank you and, and behalf of the students who have piloted this and the, and the, and the teachers that have piloted this, we thank you and, um, and we would welcome any questions at this time.
I raised my hand. I'm running a meeting, sorry, old habits. The question I have was knowing that you're kind of readjusting some of the curriculum to meet a standard, which is fantastic. And for the incoming kindergartner, it's going to be a perfect flow. What about those who are in the mix of it now, the fifth grader, the seventh grader, the 10th grader, or ninth grader? 10th grade is almost over. But how do they, um, for things that got added into their curriculum levels, how do we backfill that knowledge so that they get the full curriculum from kind of like the K to 10? So, you know, the knowledge base that, that we're trying to deliver throughout the science curriculum.
So would one of you like to answer the question as the teachers?
Something that I think Bill alluded to at the beginning is that we've been coming to the board, you know, year after year, we, we've seen you guys quite a bit. And so we've been drafting this for a while, but most of the standards, um, we have been addressing all the way through. So we've been making tweaks, obviously trying to increase the rigor. But a lot of what the content is has remained constant as we've been building.
Okay. So basically what someone at home can take from this is their child may be in eighth grade, but they haven't missed anything from K to seven.
No, that, that's the beauty of this curriculum format. We have, this, this, we, we really got deep into this work in, in the summer of two thousand and ten. And so teachers have, have been piloting, they would pilot a strand, would give them another, but then they had the first one that they had a good handle on and then they piloted the next one. And so this is, um, these documents are very familiar to the teachers and, you know, ultimately to, to the students as well.
Naomi.
This is more a kind of a clarification piece for, for those who may not be aware or think of it, but this isn't new curriculum. I mean, you've created pieces of this, but it maps to standards that have existed over some period of time. It's not something that you simply recreated from your own piece. If you could talk a little bit about that for people who may not be aware of what is behind the curriculum.
Okay, would, would, would one of you guys like to speak?
Yeah, because I was actually just thinking in response to that other question that the change has been really gradual because of the nature of how we did this. So it's like all the teachers knew as new drafts were coming forward that these were the changes and they were minor changes that accrued over time. With one or two exceptions, like we moved that human body unit, we delayed switching that over because we knew some kids would miss it when we moved it from third grade to fourth grade or I forget which two grades it was.
They had it simultaneously.
Yeah. But outside of that, yeah, it was a really gradual change.
Excellent. And the reason I asked the question, because I've been around for a while, as you probably know, and I've seen half of you at parent teacher conferences. But with that, I think whenever we talk about curriculum and, and adopting a curriculum, that there's always a question of what's different. And with what's different, it's what did my child not get or what's my child, is, what's my child going to get? So that's important, I think, as, you know, parents are, especially with science and math, they're kind of scary ones because we remember, you know, so much from high school. But on that note, that they are, they still have gotten a very rigorous and, um, and thorough science curriculum and this is just frameworking it for, for application. Mark?
So exactly right. And so I thank Jeff for his, his expansion on the, on the answer, which was really good. And, you know, it bears saying that this model actually of curriculum development is different than any that we've done before in district and really I think different than most that you'd see in other districts for the, both the time that it took, but as has been pointed out, it doesn't mean that in the time it took from the beginning of this group getting together to now that the teachers have not had an updated curriculum. I mean, it's been ongoing and the, the, the different, and difference in the model is the fact that there's been teacher feedback that this team has then reviewed and has incorporated. So that's, so I'm encouraging this group, with all kidding aside, because I've joked to them before, but they really do need to write an article about this. Because one of the things that, you know, we always say is that, you know, we want to try to contribute to the, to the field. And there's a model in the way that this team chose to develop its curriculum that I really think other colleagues can, can benefit from. And I just wonder if somebody could specifically address Naomi's question because in addition to the, the first question, she was also specifically asking about the mapping to the, the standards. So does somebody want to just talk about the relationship or I'm happy to, to do it? So let me, let me start and then, and then you can all jump in. So, so I think the premise of the question is, is this created out of whole cloth or is there some, right? And so, um, so New Hampshire has had standards for science and the And so, so, New Hampshire has had standards for science in the past and when this process began, these were mapped to, you know, we were, those were in the minds of this committee when this process began. At some point in the development of this science curriculum, the Common Core state standards were developed, which do not include science. But we knew when we were developing this that the core principles of Common Core, which apply to math and science, are application, inquiry, demonstration of knowledge and so on. And so, the understandings that we all learned about what was the premise of Common Core were introduced and embedded in their work before there was any evolution of a standard of the old state standards. And then, you have the next generation science standards, which many people have heard about, which are not directly linked to, but are corollary to the Common Core standards. And so, this document is well-mapped to the next-gen science standards, though not standard for standard, but it is informs throughout this document, next-gen and the core principles of the Common Core, the big ideas of inquiry and so on and so forth. So, they are mapped to standards. These folks didn't just create and think, I think it'd be a good idea to teach this in grade three. Right? So.
No, that's exactly what I was talking about. And I would add on what you were just saying, some words of praise of a sort, I suppose, in that one of the issues that people occasionally talk about in relation to the Common Core and various permutations thereof, is whether or not the sciences, when they're embedded, end up manifesting within the curriculum. And you've gone a step beyond that to make sure that there's rigor, both within Common Core and within the sciences, which is very nice to see.
One of the things we had done early on was that in previous models of the curriculum, processing skills were a separate unit. And so, we felt that that was very, we could even, even looking at the data, we could, we could see that we needed to have more of a focus. So, we embedded those in every single unit and strand. So, and then, another thing that we had made a decision on early on was that, you know, physical life, earth and space were not addressed at every grade level. And so, we, that was something that with this revision, we felt was important so that there weren't, there weren't gaps. And so, from K to six, we now, we now have all of those strands addressed at every level.
And to, I just want to reiterate, for those who don't have a sense of the work that that takes to pull off, it's very impressive that you put it across the.
Are there any questions on science? Michael?
Thank you for putting this together. It's very detailed. Appreciate the time. Question for you, how publicly available is this? Is this something that everybody can see? Is this like parent, like, let's just say a parent, kid just got out of third grade and they're looking at summer stuff to do. I think that this could be a guide of areas that they might be able to say, oh, you're going to learn about the sun next year, why don't you read this book for the summer or something like that? So, just, you know, putting it out there and possibly giving a guide of how to actually possibly use it as a parent, not just putting it out there, here's a curriculum, but, you know, maybe a guide of, hey, you know, if you have a student going into this grade, this might be an example of something that you might want to do over the summer, so.
So, it's an excellent idea and I know this group really likes to work together. So, there's our next task. But, but it's also true that we didn't want to, you know, go any further until the board, you know, would approve. So, hopefully, in two weeks' time, when you've had a chance to, you know, review and if you have any final questions, at that point, that the board hopefully would make its approval, then we'd feel comfortable posting, you know, online for the public. But we didn't think that was a little step ahead of, you know, the appropriate pacing of how things get done, but it absolutely will be done.
There is a graphic early on in that curriculum map that would go a long way toward that.
The chart you were looking at?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was checking that out pretty hard.
You know, and for the context of the length of time, I was just figuring it in my head, I think when you include some earlier committee members as well, I think there's been a total of actually seven births since we started working. And so, if that puts any context to it.
Is that, Bill, I didn't mean seven?
Seven births since, yeah.
Oh, wow. That's a lot of interns. Excellent. Are there any other questions from the board? Since I'm, thank you. I know I saw some development work back in my day with PERC. So, you've been working and collaborating across the district for a long time and it's coming to fruition and you do a lovely job. So, thank you so much. And I think I might be seeing you at a parent-teacher conference in the fall.
I think so.
So, I'll be the majority of you once, once a parent teacher's done, so. So, thank you very much and good luck in implementation. So, because I'm terrible at this, every time we have a board member miss a meeting, I never tell until at least the fifth or sixth item. So, Cindy Gualyumi is excused from tonight's meeting, even though it's almost half over. So, we're going on to item number six, which is the report from Special Services with John Pervizia. So, welcome. Welcome back. Never left.
So, since I'm the only one left in the room besides the board and Matt and Roger and Mark, I decided to take my jacket off, so that was it, you know? Well, thank you. I have a few items and I will try to walk through them and allow for, after each item, an opportunity for you all to ask questions if you have them. And if not, I'll certainly move on to the next item because there is a few on there today. So, my first piece that I want to talk about is really our determination report. And I think that I'll start there. So, again, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to talk about this. Each year, this report is issued and it comes with, it talks about oversight and compliance and it's really what it is. As a system of special education, we have a strong system of oversight, compliance and regulation is what happened. And tonight in your packet, I provided you with a chart and I will just give a visual to which that first chart looks like, because there's many, but it looks like this. And it has basically an outline of what the oversight is from the New Hampshire Department, starting with U.S. Department of Education, down to the Office of Special Education and Rehabilitation Services, OCR, OSERS, and then Office of Special Education Programs, New Hampshire Department of Education, the DOE, and then Division of Educational Improvement, Bureau of Special Education, our SAU, our schools, our school districts and our local schools. So, it shows that within oversight, and this was, this was put together by the State Advisory Committee on Children with Disabilities and OF SAC. So, this is a lot of that acronym soup we talk about and about what different things are called and all our acronyms. They come from all different regulatory agencies that oversee the compliance. And as compliance is brought down to us at a state level, we have certain performance indicators that we need to comply with each year. And I've also provided you with kind of a nice, again, through SAC, the State Advisory Committee with Children with Disabilities, they provided a real nice handout last year that Barbara Publicover brought to Marge and I at one of our meetings and said, hey, John, it's a very simple way to understand some of what these mean, to hand out to your, to your parents and to, and to other members who might be interested. And we will put this up on our website because it's a nice little handout to be able to show people. And it talks about graduation, dropout, district meeting, AYP and AOMs. So, it's really what our, you know, and then supervision, suspension, expulsion rates, educational environment rates, preschool environments, preschool outcomes, that's our measurement of basically how our students are doing to improve in our buildings, parent involvement, disproportionate of disabilities, basically looking at, are they representative disproportionately? And then, representation of specific disabilities, our child find, our early childhood transitions, our secondary transitions and our post-school outcomes. Those are all things that are, that are listed on here. And I think as, as you go through all of these, the next piece that I provided you with was the actual report. And that's the one with all the zeros on it. And it's, again, I come before you again tonight to talk about the number of nine years now that we have been able to, in no small feat, come forward and have a report that is 100% in compliance. And I think in doing that, we look at and we say, how does that happen? And that we can't take that lightly because it is a true team effort from many, many, many educators in our district and the family and community themselves too. So, this is an encompassing, perfect score for over nine years. And it's something to be proud of. And I think that Marge will often call me and say, you get the report? And I go, yeah, 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 yeah. And I'll go on to the things. And Marge is always good to stop me and say, John, take a moment and value this and say that it's easy, one, it may be a task for one year, but for nine consistently to hold this forward, to keep people on the same page, deserves something to stand up and applaud all those educators in the district and all those parents and students and coordinators and Matt Chevanel and Sue Lures, who runs our grants and the service providers who come from outside agencies and the parent educators, the administrative assistants. And again, as I said, the partnerships we have with the parents to make sure that all these reports are done on time and they're done accurately and they're done and were supported financially from our town that we do make what's called our yearly measurement where we need to procure funds from the town, hire them the amount we get back from the government. And we do that. And they're supportive of us to do that, to really help a lot of children in our district. So, again, I applaud the efforts of the district. I applaud the efforts of all of those that I have the pleasure to work with. And I report to the board that we've continued with another perfect score for the 2015 school year. And I hope that when next year's report comes, I can sit here for the annual 10-year and say, we've done it again. So, that's what my hope is and what I, I will strive to do in the minute I leave here again today. So, that's really, in a nutshell, not to get too much into the detail of it, but I gave you an overview of what of all those are, why they happen because of the different compliance regulations and kind of where our score is. So, is there any questions at all that I can answer about our compliance report?
Andy?
So, is it always typical that, we see these reports every year, but I noticed that the report was for the 14, 15 school year. Does it always take essentially two years to generate these reports?
Yeah, it does because we have to report out, and one of them is the financial reason, Matt, and you can certainly chime in, our MOE, but that comes out after. So, kind of like our budget, when you see our budget every year and it talks about two years past what we spent, we never have like the current year on there, it's the same thing. We have to spend the money and then close out all of our grants and our accounts and then they account for that. And that takes about a year after we've spent the money to do that. So, that's kind of why, one of the major things that holds us up, like not our October 1st count, that's done in October, that's done. Our evaluations for the year, those are done. You can see all those. Our disproportionate of disabilities, those are done. But really, when it comes to the financial underpinning of this and our parent outreach and parent survey, to get that done and returned, takes about a year and a half lapse. And that's why it comes out a couple of years later.
Thanks.
Michael?
I just wanted to congratulate you and your team and the district for everything they've done. I was impressed last year with it and also impressed this year. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Naomi.
Naomi, okay. I think it goes without saying, this is a significant amount of work. It's not something we rely on or expect that every year you take, I think is fresh for you. And all this work has to be done from square one. So, when you get a zero year after year after year after year, that is done just as meticulously for every year. So, you're not just resting on laurels. You don't get a trophy for playing. This is something you have to earn and you have to work very hard to earn that. I think you talked about grants. I think it's important to realize that because of the performance of this district, we have opportunities provided to us because of the way we do business. We're not just sending a bill to the end user, being our taxpayer. We find every opportunity and every viable dollar outside of 03054 to make this program work at, you know, the most responsible levels. And we could not do that without the right leadership. And we've been very fortunate and we're very spoiled to have that kind of leadership in our district again this year. You took over, you know, very, very big shoes to fill and they probably feel a little tight now, don't they? You've done a great job and you've had evolving demands since you've taken the role and I think you've just, you've thrived. And so, I can't thank you enough on behalf of the board, on behalf of what you do for the district, the taxpayers and, oh my gosh, especially the children and their families. So, this is, this is exactly, you know, why it's so important for us to review this every year on camera. So, you realize where those dollars are spent, how they're, how hard they're worked for. And at the end of the result, we have a zero, which is the best score you can get. So, so, thank you again for that. I know you have some other stuff, but I could not go without saying that before you moved on.
No, thank you. And again, I appreciate it again and I'll say it again, the partnership sometimes with the financial end, Matt and his team over in their basement really, really work well with my team and our, and our building. And my two, I'll say my two, but our two administrative assistants, both Kathy Kremin and Chris Shanahan in our office, they're crackerjack and they're on this. And they, and they make sure that they are continually communicating about when things are due, how they're due and how do we have this done in time. So, just wanted to mention them also as we move forward.
Thank you.
Okay. And my next item on the thing is just kind of, this is really an information and I don't have a lot more to share, but just the graph itself. I gave you a graph and a chart. I was at a presentation at the end of June with Santina Tibido, the administrator and director of New Hampshire Special Education Department and the Bureau of Special Ed. And she, she presented to us and told us kind of about the state of the state and where we are and some of, often we hear out there with trends in what's out there in special ed. And I think as you mentioned today about the cost of special ed and the, and the rising population and all these rumors that may be out there. Well, here's some data for you that talks about from the, from the latest census. It talks about kind of in New Hampshire, where are we from 2000, 2016? And it's a chart that I provided for you that talks about trends. And the, the big picture in this trend is to look at your percentage-wise of where you are. You're hovering between 15 and 16% continually throughout that graph. It doesn't change much. And that's kind of what this, this data will tell you. It really is what it is. And it's kind of that, that we stay consistent. And I've said that to Marge and Matt and Mark plenty of times, like, okay, we're graduating a few kids this year and a few in our programs, they're going out, but guess what? We just had two movers and they came back. And here we go. So, you know, that budget I planned two years out for, well, it stayed pretty true. And I think that over the last five years, we've stayed pretty true to where we've been in that, in that financial window. We stay within our budget and we try to stay there and say, we're programming for what our need is and based on individual kids. But there is a pattern to this, that you see that, that percentage, although the rate of severity of need of kids changes every day and what they need and how they need it, and that's decided at the table, at the IP team table amongst the coordinators and the parents and the teams about what that child needs, the numbers of total throughout our history from 2000, 2016 have been pretty consistent. And I think that's good data to, to have and look at when we come to where are our trends and what are we looking at? And I would say that, you know, I've said that as I've come every year, our numbers stay pretty consistent within, within our, with our program and where we've been. As the population drops of the district, our, our population seems to drop a little bit, but as the, it doesn't have any drastic big changes in what's going on. That's why I hope it stays. That's a good thing. But that's just to show you. Any questions on that trend, trending at all?
Any questions?
It's pretty straight.
I guess, yeah, the only trend I have that I think we're going to be looking for at budget time is, you know, what other demands are being made of your department and how is that going to impact, you know, the end of the day? Some of it might be federally required and some of it might not, but some of it might be the right way of doing business and achieving the educational outcomes that we're looking for. So, you know, I know we talked about mental health all the time and putting those professional developments in place and all that. And I know a lot of it will come from your space because of what you're doing in the district with that committee. So, when you talk about, you know, it says 2018, 19 budget forecasting, I think that's going to play, you know, as much as the IEPs, identifying students does, I think we have a lot of, a lot of business to handle out of your doors. So, we look forward to hearing what you come up with and obviously, the more information we're getting as a board, it's going to be imperative that we address it, so.
Thank you for that segue. That was well planned.
I tried.
I'm right into my next piece of forecasting. And that's exactly where I am. And I think that, I think that when I'm forecasting, I am looking at exactly that. What is, what is consistent and what we've been trying to do as planning out? And as you've noticed me, a few of you that have been the board with me for a few years, as a principal and now in this role for the last five years, I believe in five-year plans. I'll go back to talk about the walkie-talkie plan we had and the two-way radio plan we had for, I think, multiple years. That was a, a, a plan that was building that capacity. And when we started that, I think back in, when Matt was building a building, I was starting to look at, look at two-way radios. So there we were. But I think that as it evolved, one of the things I started about four years ago with the work with Tom Toussot and I was talking about split air conditioning units. And we started, we started installing those. And we've made nice progress in that. We had one little bump one year, we had to make a reduction, but then we added it back in this year. So we put it back in and we were able to put in two this year, which was great. So I forecast next year that I have really one more building, that I have a multi-disabled room in the area that I'd like to continue that plan along and put it one over at MES next year. And that's kind of, I've been able to put one in each of the other buildings, which has been great. So I have a space that I know will be consistent tempered. And another question down the road comes to talk to Tom about what's next. Really, we've talked at this board before about those portable conditioning units, they serve a purpose and they're okay for a temporary situation, but if that's a permanent fix, it's not really a permanent fix. They're very labor intensive, they break down, we continually replace them. It, it's a lot on his end to keep those going. And not even to mention what it does to the wear and tear of opening the windows, putting those blocks in the windows, doing all those things to the, to the external windows of the building. So it's kind of, it's something we'll continue to talk about. Do we forecast that in future budgets to, to continue this process? But for next year, we'll stay with the plan we have in place and you'll see in there again in my budget to continue that plan along, adding those systems in, in one into MES. And then in the area of technology, Nancy Rose and I have sat at this table together in past years. It's strange to be separate this year, but I think it was the way the vacations worked and where we landed this summer. But her and I have been working very collaboratively about buying technology and being smart about it. So we are looking towards universal design for learning and equipping the room with, with computers and all things kids may need. So they may not be for that one child, but they may be for multiple children in the room, such as a sound field system, which I've talked about in the, in the past. And instead of putting a unit in the back of the room on a shelf, well, let's install it the right way so it works off the computer and it works off the other systems in the, in the building. So we have one speaker system in the, in the room versus five. And we're doing some of that planning together. So you'll see probably both in Nancy's budget to do the install and the, and the, and the maintenance of it, in my budget to buy the equipment of it, to kind of utilize our funds smartly. Because if she has to put it in and maintain it, well, then I can, I can, if it's for our students of need, I can use the cost of my, my budget to put the system in place. So we're doing some more smart thinking around that universal design and working within our budgets to co-share and also not put five different speakers in one room that serve five different purposes. Be smart about how we're doing it. So we're doing some of that work together. And then again, Shannon, you mentioned the mental, mental health group. And I think that we are talking about kind of what, what are some of our budgetary impacts? Is there any? And that, that discussion, I sit here tonight, I don't have that answer yet. I'm hoping to come conclusion to it soon. Part of what's going to lead us there, I think, is some of the study work that I was so happy you approved tonight because it's going to help us look at the organization about where is our funding and where does it lie? And where is our structures lie when it comes to the whole aspect of, of students' social emotional wellbeing and mental, and mental health? Where does that lie within our budgets and what do we consider? What part of jobs are mental health? And I think that when we sat here and we heard Doug say earlier about, you know, some districts consider it 10% of the counselor's job? Is it 100% of the counselor's job? What is that? And we're going to start making some of those conversations around this focus group and this work we're doing that will certainly lead us into, now, okay, now where are some of the, where are some of that gap? And we start doing a gap analysis about, here's what we have, we know this now, here's where it's funded. What's that gap we need to, where we're not meeting needs and we need to meet more needs? And we're going to start doing some of that work in the near future. So that's coming up. And then one final area to bring up tonight that you, that we'll have more conversation around budget time. We went through a pretty significant change this year with some of the work around Saresk in their, their reorganization. And in doing that, I had to make some decisions on kind of new vendors or new places to bring in service providers because we've already written all our IEPs, we've already had all our services designed. We were well along that trail when this all came kind of down and happened. So we had to make some decisions in doing that. And in that, there was a few positions that really just didn't fit anywhere. There was no one to go out and contract and hire from. Saresk was the one that had these type of positions. And one of those was our, our, our transition coordinator at the high school, Michelle Pinkham, who does a wonderful job working with all of her kids who are at the high school, need to have a transition plan as part of their IEP. It's a federal and state requirement and we need to have that. Michelle has always worked as a contracted service under Saresk. That's not an option for us this year. I've been able to work with a third-party vendor to employer for this year because she thought she was being employed and all those things happened and I wanted to make sure that happened. And with Marge and, Marge, Marge's help and guidance, we were able to make that happen for this year. But I will be looking probably to add her in a personnel line for next year to make her part of the, the district and employer. That's probably the one person out of that fallout of 19 people that we probably will ask for her to come into the fold, to do that, just because it's a fit that doesn't really fit anywhere else. There isn't anyone you can contract that through right now with the absence of Saresk not being there. So that's where we are for kind of my forecasting right now. And I'll pause again and ask for if there's any questions.
Any questions on the board? Seeing none, you queued us up well and we'll have fewer surprises in the fall. So thank you.
And like I said, there's nothing in there, huge surprise, just kind of moving forward where we are, I think, right now. And then the final thing has come with some thought and some reflection and some, some over time, just of evolution. And I think, Shannon, you touched upon that again, too. Great partner tonight, segueing into my, my work, but you did about how, how things have evolved. And, and, and when I, when I became the, the director of special services, we also evolved and a lot of things happening. Our preschool was growing, we were beginning a mental health group, we were very involved in an RTI process. We, we had some changes in our, in our budget around our school psychologists and kind of how do we make that transformation over? By, by that nature, some of those changes made us reorganize some of the work we were doing and really look at kind of how are we being more holistically, holistic in our approach to help students and help families? And it really came to some consideration about, and what's not. And I, I sent you a memo that I wrote to Marge really about, and I'm just going to read a couple of lines to it, I won't go too far into it, but I, I just wanted to, "We are committed to provide a meaningful educational benefit in meeting diverse academic, social, emotional needs of students. Achieving this outcome would not be possible without the collaboration of parents, students, administrators, consultants, related service personnel, child study team members, general education teachers, special education, and special education teachers. Considering this more holistic approach in helping all of our students need, we ask you to consider a change for us tonight in moving our department from the Department of Special Services, Department of Student Services." And really, that comes from our involvement with things outside of necessarily the students who are just identified with a disability. We really have done a lot of work for my department, on our kindergarten, and we have grown that kindergarten program from 50 students to over 130 students with a waiting list still in, in, in going on, which is great. We have a very healthy program that, that people want to come to. And I think we have come to this board many times to talk about, well, we need a little more, well, we need a little more. And I know I've done that. And it's really because it's one of the hardest predictors we have out there, but it's also, I think, one of the most crucial things that we have done over the last few years in providing that early intervention. It's showing for us. And it really is allowing our students to come to school much more available to learn, with much more programming available to them and much more meaningful educational benefit. So that's one of the things we've done, not to mention the universal design work, the RTI work, the mental health work. And really, I look at this to say, it's, it's a way of this expansion of name to also expand, expand the way we can help organize and this help we can restructure and look at and really give some structure and help to, how do we bring nurses and counselors and behavior specialists and all these other factions together somehow? And it really helped them grow and help them grow professionally and help us grow as a district and help us meet the needs of our kids. And what I didn't put in the paper, which is interesting, I talked a little bit about this, again, with Marge the other day when I was prepping. And I said, one of the things I think that sticks out for me is we call our students now of need, we call them children's with disabilities. Children comes first, student comes first. I think when we talk about special, we don't refer to our students as special anymore. And I think it's, it's a name that was for a time, a great name and a good forward-thinking thing. And it went from being the Department of Special Ed to Special Services, which was a nice change. And I think now it's evolutionary wise that we start talking about the student services because we are really expanding to look at, how do we encompass these students, include them in everything? We are an inclusive district and how do we continue to do that to help students become part of the whole and work with all educators and all, all special education and regular educators to really meet the needs of these kids? So another question that will come up before I'm asked it because I, I kind of thought about it is budgetary. How will this change budgetarily and what, what will be there? And for me, I don't forecast and see that because as I said right now, if I have a, a speech, a speech pathologist in the room and she's working with a child on how to articulate something, who's the best model in that room? Another child. So she may work with another child in that room and if the other child has a slight deviation of his articulation, she's not going to turn around and walk away. She's going to work with them anyhow. So therefore, the funding's already being used in a more global sense. That's a very simple example, but with our special educators, they're parts, they're part of the team at the middle school, they're part of the teams at the high school and comprehensive model. We're already functioning in a realm where we're inclusive. It's just our name doesn't seem to match that right now. So any questions with that one?
And just to clarify, I queued up well because you gave us good information to read to prepare for our meeting. So on that, are there questions from the board? Naomi?
I like the change. I was wondering whether there's anything else in the district that is referred to as student services or something similar to it at the moment. No, thank you.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Any other questions from the board?
Seeing none, honestly, when I looked at this, it made sense. I think the comprehensive thing was the first thing I thought of, honestly, when Christine Minehart was in front of us a few months ago and we were talking about, maybe a year ago, actually, she was talking about how the teachers in the classroom, although they're there to support students who need the supports up, they're definitely always addressing those students who could use a better study model or, or focus model because, you know, distractors and all that, which happened to every student from the best to the, to the one that had the most needs. So I totally understand where this is coming from. I think it's definitely an evolution. I think you're in so many parts of district operations that, you know, pigeonholing your, your definition to one area definitely doesn't show what your department does. So, you know, I, I definitely see where this is coming from. And I think we did the same thing with guidance last year because it really was, it was too defining for, for the roles that they take on. So it makes sense to look at these things.
Marge?
So it'd be our intention, after all questions have been answered, that we would put this in consent on September 5th to give time for you to ponder it.
Does that work for everyone? And as anything that goes on consent, if there's any reason for further deliberation, we can always between meetings pull it off consent and make it a regular agenda item. But definitely, this is, this is making more sense. And I think we should look at, we've been looking at a lot of roles that way and, and we should continue to do so, so people will get a good understanding of all that you do, so.
And it'll be a soft role, too. I think that if it is approval and consent, I think that there's nothing that has to happen drastically. I'll certainly do a letter to inform people and do things like that. But like I said, we would still honor both names for a year to give people an opportunity to, to make the transition and change to with our letter heads and with things that we're doing office-wise, we would certainly do that, too.
So thank you. So any other questions for John? I'm getting your jammies now.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Have a good night. On item number seven, which is the clarification on newspaper article regarding water testing with a focus on THMs, because I'm not going to try to say it at 9:30 at night. I'll make you do it, Matt.
Make me say that. When last we, we met, we did another water testing of all the schools for coliform, E coli, arsenic, uranium, chloride, nitride, radon in the PFOAs. And everything met, was below standard. And there was one category that in putting the packet together, it was labeled as trihalomethanes. We'll just call them THM, THMs right now. And it said inadvertently that the state of New Hampshire had a 13-microgram cap capacity per, or maximum per, per liter. And this went after the meeting to, the National Telegraph picked up on a, a story on it and went with it. And I recall saying we needed further clarification of what, what this meant. When we got the further clarification and we talked to the state, the state of New Hampshire said the, the EPA level is 80-micrograms per liter. So that in all the categories, we were well below the 80, as stated by the EPA. So we talked to the National Telegraph reporter, communicated this information to him. He since, quite quickly, went ahead and put a retraction immediately in the online version. And then I guess Saturday after the meeting, printed a new story stating what the real information was. So it was a bit of a miscommunication as far as the way the port, report was written, but just to stress to everybody that the total THMs in the, the water as recorded at each school is well below the 80-micrograms per liter. Naomi asked what this was, and this was when water treatment systems use chlorine to sanitize lines. And when it mixes with organic material, naturally occurring kind of organic material, sometimes it'll cause, cause these THMs to, to occur. State of New Hampshire as a whole, you know, has, has this in a lot of its public wells, as does areas in the country. But for the EPA guidelines, we're well within the standards set forward by the EPA. So just this clarification.
Thank you, Matt. If there are any questions, Matt, Mike?
I have a question, but I'd just like to thank you for the swift response to the letter and taking care of that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And I think we as a board are going to continue to look at the water quality in the district, make sure it's, it's the standards, below standards when it comes to contaminants. And we'll continue to communicate with the town and the MVDDC how we can always do for better because that's how we do business here, is always doing for better. So if there are no others, we will go on to item number eight, which is the board's response to a partnership with Manchester Community College to establish an early college automotive program for Merrimack High School. So I will turn it over and let Mark McGlough take the lead.
Okay, thank you. So in order to get to the point tonight of the board's consideration, I just need to, as much for the public's information as for yours, I'd like to just go back in time just a little bit. So, because it matters that the board and the public understand how much work has, has gone into trying to continue to make our automotive program viable. So as you know, we've had a long-term educator for 30, 30-plus years who retired a few years ago. And at the time that he retired, we were fortunate enough to have a graduate of Merrimack High School and the automotive program come back from his own self-started business to come and give back and taught for a period of time for us. And we had hopes at that time that it would be a long-term relationship. And then things happened in his life that required him to go back to business and so he left. And so in that period of time, we found ourselves needing to really scour the state for educators or some kind of partnership that would allow us to continue this program. And so all kinds of things were done. And I want to say all kinds of things because at the board presentation- And I want to say all kinds of things because at the board presentation, at the high school presentation to the board back in June, you had a high school student from the automotive program who spoke passionately to you about his experiences in the program and was sending an important message that we all should be mindful that we need to keep this going for those students for whom that matters a lot. So, I really want the board and the public to understand that we've really done that. From kind of strange things like driving around the district, handing out business cards to mechanic shops all throughout Southern New Hampshire saying, hey, if anybody wants to teach, that's a strange thing to do when you walk in in a full suit and say, hey, do you guys want to, you know, but we did anything we could to try to generate interest. And we really found that it's been challenging to do that. And so, when it came to the point where it seemed like there were no educators out there that could fill this position, we then sought a partnership with some other entities that could maybe do that and then provide us with a whole different direction for our automotive program. And so, we sought partnerships with Nashville Community College and had great conversations with them and for a variety of reasons, despite great interest, that didn't materialize. And then, we were able to strike up a partnership with Manchester Community College and they really have been wonderful partners and very interested and you know that they came to the last board meeting to speak to you about our partnership. At that time that we made that connection, we did so with one group in mind particularly, although there were a number of students who yearly enroll in, or wish to enroll in automotive courses, we had a very specific concern about our seniors because if we didn't have something to offer them in this year, they would just be sort of cut loose and we try not to do that. And so, our partnership was established initially to tend to the needs of those students. And so, we made calls to students and their parents and said, we're trying to put something together, so please come up to Manchester Community College and see what we have to offer. And the president and the academic vice president and the head of the automotive department were there and presented a strong program to us. And what we said to parents at the time is, because this represents a different kind of model than we have before, we need some assurance from you that you're going to partner with us and be there so that we can sustain a class size that, you know, around 10 would be a minimum that we would really like to be able to put forth to MCC because they have a commitment, they're making a commitment to us. So, we gave July 31st as a deadline and when July 31st came, we had sort of eight very interested people. However, what hadn't been considered by them at the time was the impact of that agreement on their schedule, for instance. And so, there are some students who think it's a great idea in the summer to go up two days a week for, you know, an afternoon from like 1:15 to 5:30, but in practice thinking about, well, what does that mean for my sports? In practice, what does that mean if the only class I can take for graduation happens during the time that I am not in Merrimack? And so, we extended the deadline and brought in a counselor and had the counselor make additional outreach to families to say, here's what it would mean for your student and so on and so forth, and then extended the deadline to provide them a chance to say, yes, I really am committed or not. So, as I stand here, sit here tonight, here's what we have. We have two students who are firmly committed to doing this for this fall. And we have two students who are strongly interested in doing this this fall and will probably by tomorrow or Wednesday be willing to commit for sure. That is significantly less than the number that really we would need to make this viable, not only for ourselves but for MCC who's really proving to be a great partner. In addition to that, we have struck gold in an interesting way in that out of the blue, a person made himself known to us who is a qualified automotive educator. And in September, on the September board meeting, we'll have him nominated. We just need to go through a few more steps. So, the story of this has been a very unusual roller coaster because up until a few weeks ago, we literally had scoured every possible source that we could and have come up empty. And now, out of the blue through a variety of circumstances, and this individual's life is interested in this and is qualified person to do it. So, the great news is that out of the blue, we have someone that will be, I think, an excellent candidate to take the lead in restoring our automotive program. And we really maintain a strong desire to use this next year to have the time to build a feeder program to MCC. So, what I'm here to say tonight is that we, you know, it's the summer, it's hard to get people to be interested, it's hard for people to return phone calls. Pete Bergeron, Rich Sampieri, and others have really worked hard to try to generate interest and get this thing going. And what we feel is that if we have a little bit more time this year, we can maybe take students on a field trip to MCC. I know a number of board members would like to go to MCC, they have been nothing but gracious about opening themselves up so that we could all go and see. And whereas we were trying to solve what we felt was a crisis in the summer by trying to make something work, we're thinking, suddenly now we have a little bit more time to do even a better job of establishing a program and a feeder program and so on. So, what I'm here to say tonight is I would very much hope that the board would entertain in this next budget cycle, our recommendation that we build into the budget for next year, an amount of money that would allow us to, next year, to start a pilot program with MCC that we were trying to get in place this year, but we'll do it with a little bit better planning because now we have the luxury of a little bit more time. So, it's been a complicated process and I completely understand if you need to ask follow-up questions and I will answer them as best I can, but that's the update as I stand, sit here tonight.
Yep, I would just add one thing to that, Mark, was the, one of the, I think, obstacles is that for a student to enroll in that course, they had to be a licensed driver with a clean record. So, it wasn't the clean record that was the problem, it was the licensed drivers. So, I think when they did go on that trip, a lot of students didn't have their licenses yet and couldn't be sure they would have them in time for the first day of class, which by the way, would have been before the first day of school, I think it was the week of the 28th they would have started.
That's correct. Thank you for saying that, Shannon, that's exactly right. So, the other good thing is that if we can begin to establish a partnership now and we can talk to students about what the expectations are, they can use this year to plan. And if they were kind of on the fence about getting their driver's license, but then they know they want this, then they can plan for that so they can be ready when it hits. So, thank you for mentioning that.
No problem. Are there any questions from the board? Michael?
That is wonderful news that he may have found a candidate to fill a position that I think is very much needed. So, is it possible that, this is, if I recall correctly, dragging my memory, it's a half-a-year program, right? Was it, or for, at the MCC?
Yeah. It was going to be a half-a-year program, right? But then, we were also talking about, you know, the possibility of starting a sophomore program to get interest earlier, so all of those things we can more fully vet, you know, in this next year.
Well, I just was putting it out there that I'm not sure if it's feasible or doable to even look at if they provide it in the spring, also winter-spring, or just in the fall.
I think at this point, I appreciate your asking that, I think at this point, what I, my personal opinion on that would be if we now have the luxury of a little time that a few weeks ago I didn't think we had, I would really like to use this year to just really plan well with them. We were going to make this work, however, and, you know, we can really try to pull rabbits out of hats, but now that we don't have to, we can really do a really great job. And I don't think anybody loses in the meantime while we really build, have the time to build a great partnership and a great feeder program. So, my recommendation would be that we just hold and start a year from now, I'll be happy to come to you and talk to you about, you know, we've got it all, you know, or shorter than a year from now, that we've got that all worked out. Thank you.
Andy?
So, there's echoes in here. So, if you're hiring a full-time person to do this program, or a person to run this program in school, is it your intent to make this like an interim step for the year to have somebody in-house, or do you foresee having somebody in-house longer term in kind of creating sort of an evolved program using MCC as well as the in-house resource to teach it?
The latter. In other words, having this be a longer-term commitment with this teacher and building a feeder program, because what we cannot do that MCC can do is provide a certification for, among other things, state New Hampshire inspection. And Sullivan Tire, just down the road, has ads all summer saying, looking to hire state inspectors. So, our students, if they could be, if we could develop, which we will, a curriculum that is an excellent curriculum, standalone curriculum that serves as a feeder so that they would leave us and then move to them and get what they can offer, then it's really state-of-the-art. And so, that would be the long-term goal is both and.
So, one other question. When you were proposing that it would replace the in-house instructor, the proposal was that it would be fully paid for by the district in order to make that happen. In your vision of now that we're going to be hiring an instructor in, is your idea into a feeder program that it would be some, something that students be responsible to pay for to go into the feeder program to MCC versus something that we would pay for?
Yep, so, one of the things that was raised by the board, understandably so as a concern, was the skin-in-the-game component for students. And part of the challenge we had at that time that we presented to you was that, that in order to make this work, which was our number-one goal, we were really trying to, you know, provide an opportunity for students. It included, because there was no time to work out another sort of arrangement, it was included, the price of it was included by the district. Now, we'll have the time to, in a sense, market it a little differently, more consistent with the way that we have other offerings like running startings and so on. So, the proposal that we'll build and provide, present to the board later in the year will include, a modification that would include the responsibility to some degree of parents, you know, weighing in on this.
So, would it help the board if at a future meeting, related but not all about automotive, to know what tuitions and fees for college classes, students have the opportunity to take, which ones to be covered by the district, not covered by the district, if any are covered, and then also, you know, I guess, the, you know, at the varying levels including AP? So, if that would be helpful, we could definitely go over that as like an item, if that makes sense. Marge?
I've captured the fact that you want a program on running start, so it's just a question of when we do it, because probably we'll wait until we have more information about the automotive, so we'll present it all at one time, but I have it down to do. And the other thing I just wanted to add to Mark, knowing the instructor or having interviewed him, is the fact that when he looked at our lab, it would be cost prohibitive to try and bring our lab up to an expectation of what MCC has and that's why it is, as Mark points out, both and. He has, he's very excited about working with the likes of an MCC and he feels that the skills he has and because he's worked in the world of automotive, is that he can build this feeder program that Mark talks about. So, the fact of the matter is we still think it's the best of both worlds, we just do not want to lose the opportunity of being connected to a state-of-the-art college. And when we take you there on a field trip, the fact of the matter is that they have other programming that might be suitable for our needs too, like welding or whatever. So, we just think this would be an opportunity that would just be too good to give up, you know? So, it's just amazing, like a door kind of closed and two windows opened up.
Naomi?
I have to say, it's a mixed happiness because it's wonderful that it worked out this way. In some ways, I'm sorry that the current seniors won't get to work with all of the rather marvelous equipment and things that we heard about when they came, but yeah, it sounds like it's worked out well.
Well, the good news about that, and I agree with you, however, the good news about that is that, you know, really students, you know, there's been a great effort to meet with the students and so they've been afforded a choice in, and, you know, with options weighed and so on and so forth. So, I feel good about that too, that they've, you know, been apprised of their choices and this is, this is one that, you know, the majority are feeling they need to make, which is to not commit right now. But I really feel good that in, within the next couple of months, we'll be able to really have the time to do this right and have something super exciting to show you all in a few months.
Excellent. Any other questions? We are good. So, we're going on to item number nine, which is the board's initial response to explore the feasibility of a lease to construct wireless communications facility on school property. And I will put it over to Matt Schefel now.
Thank you. On August 4th, I received an email from Mike Elmata who represents Tower Resource Management, Inc., and it reads, his client, American Tower Corporation, is seeking to construct a new wireless communications facility in Merrimack in the general area of Reed's Ferry Elementary School. It almost gets apologetic at this point. I'm required to ask the school district whether you would entertain a lease of land to ATC for that purpose. My 20 years' experience in the wireless industry, I've never found a single school district in New England willing to lease land at public, in a public elementary school or even middle and high schools for that matter. And he goes on to say that in the mid-Atlantic region, it's a little more common, but not really all that common. They would be seeking an area of hundreds, thousand square feet, 100 by 100 to lease from us adjacent or behind some of the ball fields, either where the playground is or where the, where the upper playground is or where the Lions Road ball fields are, somewhere in that area. Fenced-in area would have to be maintained and the lease would be, the tower would be 125 feet in height and they do like a 25-year lease broken into five-year increments for renewal. So, it's something I just kind of put before you for your consideration. Marge has?
Marge has?
And in addition, I want you to know on this particular one, after Matt got the letter, that I also dealt with legal counsel. So, notice the query tonight, it's about, do you as a board want to take a next step? Because there are multiple steps to this, including public hearings and all kinds of things. So, it's just a query as to if you want to go to a next step, which would probably be having the vendor here and having a much deeper conversation as well as doing, as I say, a series of public hearings before this could ever take place, but there's no sense in going in that direction if you're not the least bit interested. So, attorney appeal was really interested in, are you of a mind that you even want to go in that direction? Say nothing of the fact that I structured it such that did not necessarily identify where it was because what we didn't need is to have persons, you know, riled up before we even get started and that's why it's just the notion of being on school property.
In subsequent emails from Michael, he had mentioned that the lease payments would be probably $20,000 a year maximum to the school district. That's information that I don't believe you have, that you probably need to know.
On that note, are there any questions from the board? Michael?
I'm not going to have a question, but I'm going to make a statement. For full disclosure, I was against the, I believe, the same company actually putting a tower in on Joppa Road near my house due to multiple reasons, some of medical, some of them just safety, can kind of go on and on. I think that our, and I'll say, the residents of the area were opposed to it as it would have been the first cell tower in residential area within Merrimack, and I think this would be the case too. Seeing that I was against it in my neighborhood, I'm going to be Seeing that I was against it in my neighborhood, I'm going to be against it in their neighborhoods, too, so.
Any other questions or comments? Naomi?
It doesn't seem worth it for the financial return, to be honest, between the steps that would have to be taken, questions that might have to be answered in regard to safety and land and leases and so forth. It's nice that they ask, I suppose, but I don't know that it's something I'd be interested in pursuing.
We're doing the eye contact thing, Andy. Didn't have a hand.
Well, we're sort of going down the table, I guess. I jokingly made the comment to Mike that if they gave us enough money to pay for an SAU sped building, maybe it'd be worth, but at $20,000 a year, certainly. I mean, fundamentally, I just don't believe that putting a tower up in a school area is just, whether or not I would personally support it, I know that parents would have a lot of angst over it, you know, the surrounding area, you know, the other residents and stuff. So, I really don't see us, from my perspective, proceeding any further.
Well, if it makes you feel better, you already have a majority of the board saying no, so we're kind of there. But on that note, we can make it unanimous at the table tonight. I know Cindy didn't weigh in, but I can't imagine, you know, given the options, that this is a slam dunk to do. It's, you know, we don't know the health impacts of these kind of things, it doesn't sound like it's going to create a great return on investment, it's just not worth, you know, we have so many, so many potentials for child safety concerns, let's not add one. I mean, it just doesn't seem like it makes sense to us. It's always been our first priority, and this isn't, this is counterintuitive to that, so.
It's kind of like the partnership that Mark was talking about with MCC and the automotive thing, we're kind of like cutting-edge being first on that. We don't want to be first in New England on this one, so I understand what you're saying, so.
So, if you could, I think, I think by consensus and no vote required, respectfully decline the request. So, but thank you for bringing it to our attention. Onto item number 10, which we're into the housekeeping part of the program, which is the approval, I know there's clapping by us, because no one else is here, the approval of the July 17th, 2017 minutes and July 25th, 2017 minutes. We'll take them one at a time. I'll entertain a motion for the 17th, made by Andy, seconded by Michael. Are there any edits to the minutes? Seeing none, we'll put the minutes to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 400. Ends the meeting of July 25th. Is there a motion to accept those minutes? Made by Michael, seconded, or made by Naomi, seconded by Michael. Are there any adds to those minutes? Seeing none, we'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 400. Onto item number 11, which is the acceptance of gifts and grants under $5,000 with Matt.
Thank you. We have from Lifetouch National School Studios to James Mastercola Upper Elementary School, the amount of $912 as a gift to be used to support the Grade Six Enterprise City Unit for Social Studies. We thank them very much for that gift, and I put that before you for your consideration.
Andy?
I move that we accept the gift from the Lifetouch National School Studios for the upper elementary school with our sincere gratitude.
Is there a second? Seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 400. Onto item number 12, which is the consent agenda with Mark.
Three items on consent tonight. The first is the approval of meals charging policy and amended meal charging procedure list. The second are the following educator resignations. Michael Sorelli, photography teacher at Merrimack High School, and John Manorini, math teacher at Merrimack High School. And we also have the following educator nominations. Anna Bohijian, part-time preschool teacher at Mastercola Elementary School, Lori Brody, math teacher at Merrimack Middle School, and Jennifer Pelletier, Grade Six teacher at Mastercola Upper Elementary School.
Do I have a motion to accept, being by Michael? Go ahead.
I motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Seconded by Andy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 400. We're on to item number 13, other? Is there any correspondence to come before the board? Michael?
I had communicated with an individual this week in regards to the water, the PFOAs and the general water considerations for the school district, and I think that I'm about to fall asleep, so I think that's about it, yeah.
And I received correspondence from a constituent that had questions regarding the cameras at Merrimack Middle School. I forwarded that to Assistant Superintendent Chevonal, who vetted the question, and we should be all set. Are there any other correspondence? Nope. Comments from the board? Seeing none? Is there any new business to come before the board? Looking to the left, looking to the right. Seeing none? Committee reports? Are there any committee reports from the board? It is summer, so I do have one. The Greater Woods Subcommittee did meet in July, and we are going over plans for maintenance for the rest of the year. I do have to make an appointment with Matt, because there is a kiosk that needs to go up, but we have to make sure that it's at the right spot, and then we have to get DigSafe involved to make sure that we dig safely. So, on that note, there's also some Girl Scout projects that are coming up. They're doing Silver Awards, Silver Star Awards, but basically what it is, it's the equivalent of an Eagle Scout, and they have to do, I believe it's 50 hours of work, and they're looking at Greater Woods and the opportunity, so it's, some of the thoughts are redecking some of the bridges that will come into Merrimack School District property over by the fields. I believe there's one that's, was put up many, many years ago, maybe even with the logs to lumber materials. They're still working on some of the outdoor classroom work, and Eagle Scout is going forward with that. We are definitely looking to also keep an eye on outdoor bonfires that are happening, one near the outdoor classroom, which is not ideal, still off school district property, but still not ideal. And there is a great bridge that has been finalized, I don't know if it was by our last meeting, but in case I didn't mention it. So, coming out of the back of Marty Drive, there was always that stream that kids would walk through and come in the back way through the outdoor classroom onto the middle school property, and there's a bridge now so they can come to school with dry feet, and it's been, it was a very, very big project, and it's finalized and in use. So, and we are meeting a week from tomorrow to do more stuff. So, I think that's all I had. Anyone else? We are good. So, I will skip number 16, but just tell you that there are no public comments on agenda items, because there is no public. And now, we will take a moment to sign the manifest, now entertain a motion to adjourn, made by Andy, seconded by Michael. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you and good night.